I call this regular city commission meeting of the city of Pahokee Tuesday, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three to order at six oh two P. M. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Mother Evangelist Ala Pringle, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
As everyone bow their head, please. Father, our Father, with all in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done. Father, we coming here tonight, tonight, tonight again, Father, for another city hall meeting tonight. Father, I see you in the name of Jesus; let everything go smooth. Father, be in the misrep now, Father. Father, we didn't come to fuss or fight, Father; we come to get things done. And Father, just bless this meeting from the beginning to the end. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Baer.
Present.
Vice Mayor Murven.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here.
City Clerk, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, each of our listening audience that's here today and also on Facebook for being here to participate in our regular scheduled commission meeting. And we'll move along our agenda. First item on the agenda is the additions of emergency bases from the city manager, if any, deletions and approval of the agenda item. City manager, this time, do we have any addition to the city agenda?
None, sir.
Do we have any additions, deletions?
None, sir.
Thank you, sir. City Commission, hearing that we don't have any additions or deletion from our agenda, what is your pleasure?
Mayor McMoosh, that we will accept the agenda for July, June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Murven and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the acceptance of the agenda as presented. Call for questions. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Murven.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden.
Yes.
Commissioner Perez.
Yes.
Mayor Baer.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have our public service comments, public comments, presentation, proclamation, if any. This section of the agenda to allow our public to speak. We give each member of the public three minutes to speak. When you come up, please state your name and your address and mute your phone if you have one. Thank you. City Clerk, at this time, do we have any comment card from our public?
Yes, sir. Ms. Annie Iffey.
Good afternoon. Annie Iffey, project director for Healthier Glades. I am coming before the commission to bring something to your attention that I would like to collaborate with you on. Back in March, there was a community conversation around mental health. Commissioner Perez and Commissioner Gonzalez was at that presentation. One of the things that I'm working on now is trying to bring that to the city of Pahokee. And so I will get with the city manager to see how we can do, how we can go about utilizing some space to host this conversation. It's going to be a conversation on mental health where we will have vendors as well as information sessions for parents. We're looking at doing this sometime between September, September, October. We want to give folks a chance to get acclimated, being back in school, but then start right away with doing that. I just wanted to let you know, we did talk about this before, and we, right now, got a group of mental health providers that are working with me to try to make sure that this happened, and we're also trying to do it in Spanish and Creole. So the one in Creole, we're trying to do in August at First Haitian Baptist Church. So I just want to make sure that you are aware of that. And then one more thing, I didn't put on the public comments, but since I'm here, I just want to make sure people know, you should be, you may have seen it on social media in regards to Palm Trans with the bus routes, the changing of the bus routes. They really need your input, particularly those who ride Route forty-seven. So based on, and that's the one that goes from Canal Point to the project in Belgrade. So if you ride that route, one of the recommendations is for that route to be discontinued. So if you do not want that route discontinued, you need to put your input. If you go to the county website, you probably see some information, or go to Palm Trans website, you probably see some information. If y'all can help get the word out, that'd be great. They're still looking for input from the residents. With that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will they hear?
Ms. Jingo Bram.
Good evening, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm Donna Jingo, this is Bramwood Empower Healthcare, and we're here to talk to you about some updates at our clinic in regards to mental health to facilitate our comprehensive model of care. We take care of patients' mind, body, and spirit. And I have with me today our doctoral student, who is born and raised in the Glades, that we want to support her in getting her doctorate program, her doctorate degree, and she's going to talk about the mental health program that we have at the clinic.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donna Pedro. I'm a family nurse practitioner and a doctoral student. We're working on a program for mental health. It's called Pearls. It's a program to encourage active and rewarding lives. It was developed by the University of Washington, and we're looking for participants that maybe feel sad, lonely, over the age of fifty. It's a free program. It's available in English and in Spanish. There are three coaches that were trained by the University of Washington. And we provide the tools so that they can manage their feelings and improve their quality of life. We hope people find their joy in life again. So even if individuals are already receiving mental health services, whatever tools they're learning in therapy, we want them to bring those to our sessions, their individual sessions that's held on a weekly basis, and we teach them how to incorporate those tools into real life. And for those who aren't in therapy yet, we do have a network of individuals that we can refer to if we feel that they need additional services as well. And the program is free. You don't need any transportation. We come to you, or it can be done via the Internet as well, telehealth, and it's private, it's confidential, and if anyone completes all of the sessions, they receive a gift card incentive for completing it. And the only requirement is that you're fifty or above and have a history of depression. Any questions?
The history of depression has to be documented. Has to have been diagnosed.
No, ma'am. What we do when we first meet the patients is we have them. Oh, we have them complete a scale. It's a PHQ nine. We go over a set of nine questions with them, and based on their level, we can determine if they have some mild depression. That's how we determine if they're eligible.
So you will assess them?
Yes. Because some people don't realize they're depressed, and here's an opportunity to identify that need that they may not even know that they have, and to get them the help they need. We're healthcare providers. They're going to be in the right place. I want to pass out the.
You're located at the.
I'm still at the First United Methodist Church.
Yeah.
Four nine one E Main Street. But again, and these are in English and Spanish, again, if someone isn't comfortable with coming to church, we meet you where you are. It can be at a private room in the library or a center. It's wherever you're comfortable, you and your culture comfortable. And the flyers are in English and Spanish. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
In addition to comments, cards.
Ms. Alaa Pringle.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Alaa Pringle. I live at three sixteen Kismat Avenue, Pahokee. Praise God, and I've just come tonight to talk about, ask Mr. Lucas about the splash pad again, because I don't think it's on yet, and this is almost July. That's how I was here. You say you were going to get the pump or something.
So I have a gentleman coming out this Thursday in the A. M. to.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
What time? Because I'm going to be there.
He's going to come in the A. M., so when he gets there.
I'll be up.
When he gets there, he's going to be tearing down things and assessing what's wrong with the pump, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, and this, y'all, you asked me earlier tonight. Bless you. And my other thing is about Laramo Road. I haven't seen nobody starting on that yet.
We working on it. We trying to get it planned again.
I ain't seen y'all nothing. I ain't seen nobody nothing. And I was told too that, I don't know if it's true or not, Mayor Baer, no, Mr. Lucas, that you ought to start lending money.
We don't have a lending program, ma'am.
Y'all don't have a loan, sitting, I'm walking, I'm just icing, I heard that.
I don't know how you heard that.
Okay, okay.
That's not what I told you. What I told you clearly was, when you do a facade grant, it's like a loan. That's all I said to you.
I don't want no grant. I don't want no loan. I want, y'all giving us some more offer of money?
Well, what will happen is, the deadline's passed. We have to reassess and see who's made it through and how much money we have left over, and then reconvene with my bosses here at the commission, and we can reappropriate if they care to do that.
Okay. Okay, you on the ball tonight, Mr. Lucas. Bless your heart.
I ate my Wheaties today.
Yes. Praise God, praise God. And one more thing I'd like to talk about, I still haven't seen nobody started on the, what, McCruy Road? And I still say it was ninety thousand dollars. Y'all say nine hundred, but y'all know ain't no nine hundred going to start on no road, fixing no road.
No, nine hundred thousand, close to a million dollars.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, DJ didn't tell me that last time, but I wrote down nine thousand, and somebody up there told me nine hundred. It wasn't none of you. See, I know one of y'all seen it. And so when I say I know nine hundred, we're going to start now. But anyway, back to the splash pad, I'm serious about that, because I don't have no little children, but I'm concerned about our citizen children. This is summer, and they've been out of school now, going over a couple of weeks, and they still, I got somebody's minute. Started over there.
She has.
I has her minute. That's okay?
Yes, good.
Okay. And since, uh, Mrs. Jones gave me her minutes, and boy, y'all mustn't seen no pretty, just look at y'all, how y'all looking at me. And I thank God for the shared department. Y'all did a great job out there giving out food. Praise God, I didn't get no, but I thank God for y'all. Y'all did an awesome job. But, and then, like I said again, Pahokee, y'all, we need to tighten up. All y'all were sitting up there on that board, tighten up, because Pahokee is in a mess. And every time I come to the meeting, bring my guys coming up in, y'all be talking about you're finna do this and finna do that. And Finna ain't got, well, how many of letters in it? I, F, I, N, A. Five. And you know it's time to do something. I don't just be coming up here just to be talking and let y'all see something pretty. I come down, I mean business. When I come up here, I meant what I said about that splash pad and about that road, Laramo Road, all the roads in Pahokee, tow up. See, y'all, like I said, y'all don't travel them roads, so y'all, y'all don't care. I'm addressing that to you, city manager.
Well, you know, one of the things I get tired of is y'all telling me that I don't care.
You get tired, you need to step down, because I'm going to ask some questions. That's what you're supposed to do, answer our question.
I don't have a problem answering questions, but don't tell me how I feel.
We are your boss. We're going to put y'all in them seat.
Don't tell me how I feel.
Yes, sir. I'm telling you, don't you tell me either.
Well, we mutual.
Stay in your lane now.
You asking me a question.
In your lane.
That takes me out of my lane.
In your lane. And that's not the first time you ever answered some questions, and you done had answered them. And y'all and Mr. Bowden, you, every time you, every time the commission everybody agreed to hire somebody in Pahokee, you hollering about, no, we need somebody out of town. You don't like Pahokee, you ought to move. And that ain't right. We done voted you in, now you don't want nobody to get no job in Pahokee? That's not right. I said what I meant, and I meant what I said. Oh, I got some more stuff.
Yeah.
I'm going to rub on you some more. If you don't like it, like I said, get off of here. We voted for y'all to help us, and y'all ain't doing nothing. Pahokee going down, down, down. And y'all, with that, Pahokee, y'all need to be ashamed. Now, y'all, what y'all say to beautify it too? Thank you. Now, I got several more stuff, six. And then, oh, that's a, oh, God. Praise the Lord. Now, y'all know, and I'm telling the truth, everybody here know, even y'all up down that, up there on that, up down them seats. We voted y'all in, y'all say y'all going to do this, y'all going to do that. All you hear was D. M. W. Let me take this mask off. D. M., what y'all were, B. M. W., B. M. B. Now, I'm trying to think what that's due for. And I sat out there all day, but y'all know we voted y'all in, we can vote y'all out. If you ain't going to do right by the citizens, why are you running for these positions? Because that's not right. Because we love Pahokee. I was born and raised, and I'm going to fight for Pahokee, I'm going to talk, and ain't nobody going to stop me from talking. And I meant what I said, and I said what I meant. And so when I leave here tonight, y'all can talk about me if you want to, but the man above see you. Praise God, you understood me, Commissioner Bowden? You can look at me.
I heard you, ma'am.
All right then, God bless all y'all.
Thank you.
In addition to comments, cards, city clerk.
Ms. Lolita Kimes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lolita Kimes. I have to resign at two nine zero Parkview Court. I want to start out by talking about the, to Mr. Lucas. I went up there to turn in my business application, and I'm trying to figure out how you always saying that, well, you told me that the business grants, offer grant money is only for commercial businesses only.
That's not what I said.
Okay, we going, okay, I'm going to go on a little further. You told me that I was not eligible for the commercial grant, the, the business grant, because my business is not in a commercial, on a commercial property. You also told me, you talked to Ms. McDonald's about the same thing, and I told you, I said that lady does not own that property. She rents that property, so she cannot do anything to somebody else's property. You also told me that I could be eligible for a loan, and you could put a lien, I can get a loan for two years. Now, this is, these are his exact words, I was at his office and talking to him. I can get a loan for two years, you, y'all will have to put a lien on my property until the loan is paid off. Again, we want to know when the city start giving out loans.
Ma'am, I clearly said a facade grant works like a grant, it's like a loan.
That's not what you told me, Mr. Lucas.
Why would I lie?
You did lie. You sit up here lying, because I know exactly what you told me. You, you told me you can, y'all can give me a loan, a two-year loan, and y'all have to put a lien on my property until the loan is paid off. Those were your exact words.
So let me refresh your memory. So you recall I said a facade grant operates over a two-year period, like a grant, like a loan, in which we, as a city, if we granted you, but you weren't eligible for.
You didn't say anything about if.
Hold on, hold on.
No if was said.
Ma'am, I don't know why you're coming in with all this. Now, we sat down for five minutes, and you telling me that I said all these things, and that's not true.
We would have sat there longer than that, but I got up, and you hollering about, oh, that's why people don't like to talk to me. I was through talking. I didn't want no loan, I wanted a business grant. And another thing I want to say is, the, well, I want to ask Mr. Ma, Mr. Baer, does the, the business grants, does they have to be, you have to have resides on a commercial property for a business grant?
That, I'm not one hundred percent sure of that language in there. Ms. Washington is in the back, maybe she can elaborate on that requirement.
And the reason why I ask that is because when Mr. Lucas told me about that we have to have a commercial property, that's when Ms. McDonald's name came up, because he said he talked to her and told her that also.
I didn't say that. I said.
Man, okay, listen, okay, I'm talking to Mr. Baer, sir.
Who, wait a minute.
I'm just, I'm talking to Mr. Baer, Mr. Baer, because I know exactly what this man told me. Is I already not here?
Hello. Good evening, everyone, mayor, commission, community members. So just to provide some clarification, the grant is for business owners. You can have a home-based business, you can have a brick and mortar business to participate in the grant. However, there are some stipulations. I believe it's on the second sheet, either the first or the second sheet, it lists all the documentation that you would have to provide. Examples would be your business tax receipt, the tax return, a budget, the general things that grants require. And the, the grant is up to five thousand dollars, okay? And that is, and if you are a home-based business, quite obviously, you can't use the grant for like windows and doors and things like that, that a brick and mortar business, which would be a business that you own, you have your door, you go into it, it's its own piece of property. So does that help?
Okay.
What else do you need to?
Okay, well, you said, okay, y'all, it's a sheet missing out of the package.
I can't speak to that.
There is a sheet missing, because when, when you just explained what the grant can be used for, on the bottom of that paper, it say for the following. So I'm looking, and I'm looking, say for the following, I don't see anything. So the girl that work with Ms. Palac, went in the back, the asked by the other sheet. When she came back out, the girl looked at me and said.
I can't speak to her actions, but you're more than welcome to come by tomorrow. I will give you a full and complete packet. I will sit down with you, and we'll go through everything together.
Okay.
What time do you want to come by?
Tomorrow?
Yes, ma'am.
What time y'all open?
We open at eight, so you want to.
I'll be there at nine.
Nine? Okay, perfect. I'll see you tomorrow at nine.
Okay, I have, no, I'm not finished, but I have somebody that's minutes. Can I have to wait today? Come up, or can I go here and speak? Because I'm not finished.
Who? Go ahead.
You all, you all.
Let me hear, let me hear from our city clerk on this. I'm going to say our city attorney. City attorney, you have anything you wanted to.
You all, you all technically don't have a policy on this. This is like something that happens every now and then, but cities that do have a policy on it, which, which Pahokee doesn't, folks will come up and then they give their time. So it, but somebody has to actually come up and say, I'm, you know, I'm so-and-so, and I'm giving my time. But, but, but that's somebody who has signed up and meets all the other requirements, but, but like I said, you all don't have a policy on that at all. So it's just something that you allow from time to time to happen.
Shakil. Shakil, wait a minute. The next person is Robert Love.
But let her go first, let her go, because she ain't finished. Can she go?
I want to finish.
Because I ain't going to be finished. You don't see all them names behind me? Robert Love, twenty-six thirty-eight, Gate East. Y'all know what I come for, business, business. Y'all see where the overalls on? I mean business. Tonight, I mean business, because since the last meeting, I've been just turning over in my sleep since the last meeting, because after I had sat down, I heard the lobbyist got up here and said he had turned in the first phase of the Martin Luther King Park, which was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. He stood right here, and he said to y'all and to us, we done finished the first phase of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the Gonzalez said, what phase? And we kept on, what phase of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars y'all done did to Martin Luther King Park? Mr. Lucas tried to say something, and Ms. Perez said, what, uh, what, what he had did when he went out there and put the flags on the flag, the two hundred and fifty thousand?
Survey.
A survey. That's what he tried to explain, the survey. And while he trying to explain this survey for two hundred and fifty thousand, everybody's still saying what the first phase was. He said, I'm going to talk about it privately, privately. Okay, because I'm listening at this man say they turned in the papers in Tallahassee saying they done finished, Keith. Then he say, we done turned it in, so that's the only way we can get the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This what he says standing here. He say the only way we can get the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is we show we done turned in the first phase. That's what he said after the lobbyist said that. Oh, well, we done turned in the first phase. I still want to know how they get some papers to Tallahassee, and they ain't finished. How did they get some papers to Tallahassee that asked for five hundred and fifty thousand? And the lobbyist stood here and say, the only way we can get the five hundred and fifty thousand is show them that we finished with the first phase. I was sitting right there, I couldn't say nothing, because I would have been out of order like on the wood. So I've been, two weeks, I've been trying to figure out, where is the first phase that you done done at Martin Luther King Park for the two hundred and fifty thousand? I guess you explained it to them, and I know you didn't, because every time you say you going to do something, you don't do it. We come back here two weeks later, oh, we turned on the splash pad, and it was on, two weeks? I could have done find somebody two weeks, but you going to get here tonight and say somebody going to be here third. So when the next commission meeting come around, you'll say, tell another lie, about they came and they did this and did that. Because I ain't going to forget when you and Carlos said that it was an engineer that had done been out there. I still been saying, I'm going to come to the city hall and find out where the papers that y'all paid, whoever name behind me, I got them three minutes. Call them.
Shakil.
Why, see them? See them? Now, she just want, whoever name behind that? Come on, because I want to get all the same.
Miss Sheila Williams.
Yeah, I'm sure with that, that Sheila Williams. Let me get, I'm going to get off of that, ma'am.
Sheila, if you would, Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Sheila.
Mr. Bustin, wait till I finish, wait till I finish, because she had to do it. It's organized.
Okay.
What do you say?
Someone going to make a comment about MLK to at least answer some of your concerns about that.
I can get that. Okay, who says you going to ask?
Sheila Williams, two seventy-one Booker Place, and my main concern is still the tree that's on that empty lot that's next to my house. Nobody still hasn't been there, and I paid fifteen hundred dollars for a tent on my house, and I'm seeing, I'm seeing some little spots that the termites might be trying to come back, and that's going to be a problem. And I don't have another fifteen hundred dollars to put a tent over my house again. Y'all going to pay that?
What's your address, ma'am?
What's your address, ma'am? What's your address? What's your address?
Two seventy-one Booker Place, Bogey.
Keith know where is that, 'cause the last meeting, Keith had done went and took pictures of it. I done put it on Facebook three or four times. He know it's that, 'cause the last meeting, know what he said? I go by there tomorrow. I guess, yeah, tomorrow don't never get here, 'cause every time, twelve o'clock at night, it be the day.
Tell me what I hadn't done.
I ain't telling you, I ain't telling you, I'm telling you what you ain't done, you ain't done nothing since you been by there. You ain't done nothing, I know it's...
So, actually, the Jackson family came out, and they having a problem with some of their equipment to be able to saw over there. Also, she has a vehicle, a black SUV, in the way over there, and they were concerned about that as well. But don't, don't, don't tell me what I don't do.
I got plenty of time tonight to listen at the lies, 'cause that's what I want, this is what I want the commissioner to... But listen, 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 we got plenty of time tonight, so I got, I want the commissioner to understand that they ought to be tired of all the lies that this man tell. Every meeting, he tell lies, and you been telling me lies, I don't know how long. And you know, like I say, you told me it was gonna be thirty thousand to fix the splash pad, what she talking about? And then you came back after I said that's a lie, you told me here were eighty thousand. And then y'all come back and started feeling meet when y'all were talking about offer money. Y'all came up with a plan where you gonna spend three hundred thousand out there, y'all remember that? Do you remember that, Miss Boule? When y'all came up with a plan where y'all gonna spend three hundred thousand in the splash pad, do y'all remember that? After offer money? Do y'all remember that?
I said, I remembered that numbers were discussed.
Yeah, three hundred thousand. When it don't cost three thousand, right now, probably. But you said here, we from thirty, eighty, to three hundred thousand, and it's another whole year, they gonna be done miss the splash pad. 'Cause you said now, I ain't talking about the commissioners, it's your job to do what they don't, 'cause they hired you to do this, but you ain't doing nothing. If anybody here sitting here saying you doing something, they must be don't live in Pahokee. And I don't live in Pahokee, and I know you ain't doing nothing. 'Cause I'm here every other day watching what you ain't did. And just like I was about to say about her house, you ain't going down there to do nothing, you just told that lie, that the Jackson boy. You know, duh, well, I'm gonna call him soon as I get out of here. So, you better call him for me, 'cause soon as I get out of here, I'm gonna call them and ask them if you done talked to them. You sat up there and told that woman there a lie in her face about what she ain't said. And they sat there and know you a big liar. You been lying ever since you been in here. And like I say, the last meeting, they should've been fooled when you said, oh, yeah, we done turned in the fa, the paperwork. They should've been fooled when you said, oh, we turned the, we, I got some more minutes, come on. Call somebody.
Shakil Bussin.
Well, we go right back, come on, hey, you got my man. She got, she got, she, she need it, she need it, right back tomorrow. Oh, I got a bunch of them.
Okay, I'm back, y'all. Okay. I'm gonna leave it, the long thing alone, I'm gonna leave that alone, 'cause you started, sit there, you sitting up there in my face telling me a lie, because I know exactly what you told me. Okay, I'm back to the houses in East Lake Village. Those houses in East Lake Village have been like that for, I don't know how many years. I don't know how many years. The city have steps for homes, the houses that been sitting up there about to fall down by themselves. First, y'all have to send these people out a certified letter. A certified letter. Second, y'all supposed to put a lien on them properties. The third step is a letting. The fourth step is foreclosure. Right? Okay. The first and third, when it's, y'all supposed to put them houses up for auction. Okay, and I want to know, out of all these years, why haven't none of that stuff been done? They already, I told them, the houses, the trees covering the houses up. I seen Mr. Shorty, Lord Jesus, this man about this tall, had a cane knife, out there trying to cut down some hedges taller than the house. My heart won't let me pass by that man, but I would say, Mr. Shorty, please put that cane knife down, you cannot cut those bushes down with a cane knife. Them people didn't get a bu, a bulldozer to push them, all them bushes down, in front of their house. And that particular house, someone stays there, somebody living in that house like that. The city has to do better. This is ridiculous. On South Coconut Road, we still have a cane field sitting right there. You can't miss it, 'cause when your friends coming in, before you make that little dip, the turn to go to North Coconut, the cane field sitting right there, you could see it from coming into East Lake Village. It's, we got cane fields sitting in a residential area. Pahokee is the only place have cane fields sitting in a residential area. And I'm not getting, it's still sitting there, I've been complaining, I've been complaining, and nothing still haven't been done. And I want to know why, what's the holdup? My taxes haven't went back up yet, still, because y'all cut down that one cane field, still there's another one down on the other side of the street. The houses still haven't been torn down. It's, it's ridiculous. And it's sad. And again, I want to know how, since the offer grant, business grant, supposed to be for commercial businesses, how the Thai man get a, a grant? He have a commercial, ah, business, his business is mobile. He have a mobile business, and he was the first one got a grant, Mr. Lucas. Why? He's not eligible either, but he received a grant. And that's not fair to us, if y'all gonna get them a grant, we give us one. We deserve one also. You have to be fair to everybody. You can't have picks and chooses of who gonna get grant money, that's wrong.
Ms. Cynthia Hall.
That's, yeah, I got it. Can you answer that question? Did, did, ah, did the Thai man get a grant? I wouldn't know. You, you don't have a no, Nini, can you call somebody up there?
Well, he told me he gave one, he told me, that and my daughter.
Well, he lying on y'all.
And Lucas there that day too.
He told us together, he lying on y'all. I never talked to any of y'all together. I ain't said you.
We talking about the Thai man, we talking about the Thai man.
I know you ain't talked to me, 'cause I would like you to talk to me. You talked to me on the live.
It's mutual, sir.
Yes. It's mutual. No, it ain't mutual, 'cause you talked to me on the live and told all kind of lies. You ain't got to explain nothing, Miss Boule, we got this, we got this, I understand. You ain't got to explain nothing, Miss Boule, you ain't got to explain. I'm, I'm asking a question.
If, if, if...
You're to your boss.
Hold up, it's, 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 it's a speaker's time, so if they don't want an answer to the question, that's fine. We'll do it in a different, ah, time. We'll, we'll make sure that, that information is clarified.
We gonna be all right, there's some more time I got. Because I, I, like I said, the commission, I ain't blaming y'all for nothing in Pahokee, 'cause y'all done hired this man, that's all I blame y'all for. List, sending him, listening at him lie every meeting, and then going along with it, every meeting. Here's about time, some, 'cause like I remember that, the, ah, town hall meeting, when Pastor Waters come up in there and holler, well, y'all need to try him and see how he work, and then if he don't work out, get rid of it. If I'm riding around with a flat tire, ain't gonna get there faster than you. We ain't gonna get nowhere with this flat tire right here. And then I'm gonna go to Barfield Highway, which is Ms. Bussin them. They got a business on Barfield Highway. And if you go by there, it look like a dump every day, but ain't nobody been there to say this what we doing. Y'all ain't gonna go out there to say nothing to the businesses, and you, Mr. Lucas, this why I say the commission should hold you accountable. See, you go to writing like you finna do something, and you don't be finna do nothing. It's a joke when you up here, but it's business when I'm up here, I'm telling you. I done got fed up sometime with the lies and coming here, especially the last meeting, after you lied, 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 and then you tell this woman. You fed up with people telling you what you think. What you think, people thinking when they tell you what you think? Do you have a problem with people telling you how they feel? I see you do. But you ain't got to answer me, I need you to answer this commission, when they ask you how many times you done lied to them about the splash pad. Like I say, you remember talking to me on the live, I'm live on, like, on Facebook, and you called me not knowing who I was until ten minutes after you done been talking to me, and then you say, who I'm talking to? And I say, Robert Love. And your heart fell. Everything you went to saying, with the trembling saying, oh, I ain't know who I was talking to, I'm gonna call you back tomorrow, you ain't called me back yet. 'Cause we were talking about how you lied about the splash pad then. And like I asked all of them the last meeting, have y'all listened at him lie about these things? And all of y'all said, yes. So, tonight, like I said, when I go to talking about Barfield Highway and all the other things that ain't be getting, ain't getting done in Pahokee, it's because he don't know what he doing. And they looking for him to know what he doing, and he ain't showed them anything yet. And like I said, Pastor Waters, call somebody else's name.
Ms. Tammy Bussin?
I need mine.
Come on, Ms. Bussin.
Good evening, everybody. I, I came to the meeting tonight, and I try to come each meeting, but I normally have my business meeting on Tuesday nights. But the reason why I'm here tonight is to, to, again, address the Barfield Highway issue. My business, my primary office is on Barfield Highway. My son's business, Tri-County Funeral Home. Yes, there's still a funeral home in Pahokee, okay? Um, going to go back to Bussin Brothers, ah, we changed the name for the confusion, but, but we're just trying to figure out, you know, what's the status, what's the update for the highway? Because I'm having meetings on Thursday nights to educate our community. I'm not trying to sell anything, I want to educate our people, I'm from Pahokee. I moved to the acreage because better life for my children, but I still love Pahokee, and I came back here to open up a business and to buy property to be in my hometown. And so, being here, I'm wanting to see us come together and work together and see some growth, but I'm listening to the people in the audience, and week after week, you know, I'm, I'm watching my hometown people, and we're just trying to see what are we doing? But my, my issue is Barfield Highway, what's the update, what's the status? When is it going to be completed, how, how we doing with that? Um, again, trying to have the meetings, um, you know, letting people know that we're here. You know, for whatever reasons, you know, it, there may be some issues, I don't care about that, I just care about the growth of Pahokee. Um, when I was over here the other day for a meeting, and I just, just happened to ride around town, you know, went through East Lake Village, went through Makula Village where I was raised and stuff, and just to see the highway and the, and, and the, um, the, the land, you know, the, the landscape and everything. Um, even at my office, that's the other question, when is the, the trash picked up? You know, the dumpster where our office is, there are some tires that's been there for three or four weeks. Do we, and, and we, and they, they didn't come from our vehicles. So, I don't know who dumped them there, but it's still, you know, it looks bad there. You know, representing not just the business, but the city. So, my thing is, is just asking that whatever, um, we're working on to improve, you know, I would like to see us work together to improve it. Um, I would like for the community to work with the city, and the city to work with the community, but we gotta do something. You know, and I'm gonna say this my last thirty seconds, for many, 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 many years, I'm just gonna keep it real, when we were in Pahokee, raised in Pahokee, we had white, af, ah, ah, white American sitting in these seats. And for years, we prayed to get some people that look like us, you know, a diverse group, white, black, and Hispanic. Now, we here. And I just, I don't, I don't want to keep hearing people say, we're not doing anything, that you're not doing anything. So, I just want to put it out there, let's work together on seeing some improvement. Bless you all.
Let me use this time quickly to have, ah, Ms. Adam just briefly, she had a comment, wanted to follow up on the, ah, MLK. And also, while you here, just address Barfield Highway, we try to give an update at each commission meeting, the commission have requested that. In our standard project, we want to know, and we want the community to know how we're progressing and what's the status.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission. Um, I'm gonna work backwards since I have Barfield Highway up. Um, so, so far, Barfield Highway is at ninety, about ninety percent completion, and I know it doesn't look like that. However, the overall is ninety percent completion, ah, what has been submitted to FDOT. Ah, they are, contract date, well, Rosso's contract date for their contract will be ending July the eleventh. They have submitted a request to the city and FDOT to extend that contract so that they can complete the road. Ah, tonight's agenda is, I'm sorry, no, it's next, it's coming, it has already been passed, the extension for time from FDOT so that we can finish the road. Ah, as of right now, they have completed the drainage from First to Main Street, and that happened, um, with the crossing over. Ah, they have continued the drainage to Third Street. Also, they are putting down slab and the geo grid base north of First Street. Um, today, we did identify some culverts that were not covered up, and I did contact them, Rosso, to ask them to get that rectified so that the fill, the, um, lime, silo, any of that will not wash through our waters and our, um, culverts. Ah, they have resubmitted Phase Two shop drawings, um, for as built, and they're waiting on, um, acceptance of those, as well as some information that has to go to the Department of Health, ah, for approval. So, next is your question...
Ms. Hannah, Ms. Hannah. Ah, will you tell her till when the, the contract has been extended?
So, the contract for, from FDOT, contract has been extended to twenty twenty-four. So, which is next year, which means that that includes all utilities, it includes construction. So, everything will be completed, all the way up to where, where, where they started at and they're completing. So, that is the plan. Rosso's contract includes construction and the utilities so that, in order that they are able to abide by FDOT's contract as well as Palm Beach County.
You said twenty twenty-four, is it January?
I'm sorry, June, June. June thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Okay. And it could get completed before then, that allows a window of time just in case, but the contract date is for June, twenty twenty-four. And if I may answer the question in reference to Laramore, um, Ms. Frenel, you may not remember, last commission meeting, you asked about Laramore Road, and I did tell you that a SCOP application, which is a small county outreach program through the state, had been submitted. We had some additional items to resubmit to them, so we're waiting on a response because we can't go out and, we don't have the funds sitting there, we, it will be reimbursement to go tear up the road. So, we have put in the application to FDOT to apply for funding to get our road done. So, the application was submitted March of this year. And so, it came back a few weeks ago with some additions, question, additional questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we not get a, ah, millions of dollars for the, for the infrastructure from, ah, a commissioner from Palm Beach County years ago?
In reference to...
Infrastructure, roads, sidewalks. It was millions and millions of dollars, 'cause we were asked...
Did it come to, did it come to the city of Pahokee?
Yeah, the city of Pahokee.
And do you remember what year that was?
No, I'm in the process of getting all the information.
If you get the information before we, I don't know what millions of dollars that was during my tenure, but...
Well, I was, I was, I was asked by, by someone in Tallahassee what we had done with the money that we got from, from that commissioner. Did it wasn't a grown, or I forgot the name of the commissioner.
I don't know.
If, if, if I could at this time, I want to continue with the, ah, public comments so we can get that out of the way. What we tried to do is kind of interject a little your questions to be answered, but we want to make sure we have that. We'll lie there right quick.
So, the first phase of MLK Park, the first phase of MLK Park includes fixed decay, paving, additional parking, new age appropriate playground equipment, ah, LED lighting, walking path, remodeling the baseball field and the soccer field. That is what the first phase of the MLK that we accepted the FD, FDEP grant for. So, those items on there required that a survey be completed, which has been completed and has been submitted to the state. From that survey, they do geotechnical, the engineer is working on everything that needs to go on the RFP to be submitted out. So, however, that reference came to, for Phase Two of MLK Park... So however, that reference came to for phase two of MLK Park. Phase two, yes, there are certain portions that I'm sure legislative, legislative looked at in order to determine what phase two was. But phase one, we have, phase one includes two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that is also reimbursable. We spend our money before we get it back.
But it's not complete.
It is not complete.
Because that's what the understanding we got from that lobbyist, that it was complete and they had turned it into paper.
When you see completion, you will know completion.
Can you go over the, the things that you said that, that grant was for?
Can I do one better and send you the grant application? But it was, um, LED lighting, new walking path, remodel baseball and soccer fields, install, uh, seats and bleachers on the fields, uh, age appropriate playground and outdoor fitness equipment and additional parking and to fix decay, uh, park paving.
And playground equipment, you, you said the first time, is that included?
Yes, it says age appropriate playground equipment. And so there's a twenty thousand dollar match included with that. So that makes the total amount that we need to spend for that would be two fifty. That twenty thousand, the city has to match. Two hundred and fifty thousand is the grant from, it's called the FERDAP grant that comes from FDEP. That two hundred and fifty thousand is reimbursable. We spend our money, we submit what we have spent it on after procurement process has been done appropriately. And then we'll reimburse that money.
Do you have a date for completion on it?
Not as of right now. But the, the grant deadline is due the first phase. The deadline says December thirty-first. We have asked for, I'm hoping to get an extension so that we can be able to complete.
Last question. Why would you need an extension if it's already done?
It's not, I just said the park was not completed.
I'm saying, y'all got everything that need to be done.
I, I don't.
You just named everything that need to be done. Why would you need an extension to turn it in again?
No, it's, grant extension means completion of the entire project. That means I can close out the grant. That legislative request for this application did not include that item. It included, I understand what you're saying, but it, for that request and that approved grant did not include, it only included those items that I referenced.
In order for them to finish somebody, got to be taken by alligators or something like that.
We can include that in phase two, right?
Okay. City Clerk at this time, are there any comments, cards, so we can finish this, please?
Good afternoon, good afternoon, good afternoon. Blessing, blessing, blesses everyone. My first question is on January the tenth, I was fired because I was no longer needed. And I never got answers for that. When I came up last week, I asked about the rental assistance. No one gave me answers on that. My question was with the rental assistance, the same thing, my driver's license, my mailing address, states that I live in Pahokee. When we left the meeting, the last meeting, Carlos addressed me outside. One thing I can say, Mr. Carlos, when I speak in public, I want my answers in public, not behind closed doors because you didn't say the city gets a portion of my infestation taxes and the county gets half of, half of that. My question is again, where's all these stipulation coming with, coming up with these offer money? Who makes these stipulations for the offer money? Is it the city making these stipulation? A question again. When the state got that offer money, did they give y'all stipulation how it should be spent? Who should receive it? Okay, if that's so, that would answer a lot of my questions because I've never seen that. We, we, I'm starting asking questions, just like I just said, about the rental assistance. Who made these stipulation about annexing the, don't live in this area? I don't understand that. That's why I'm asking questions now. But when I did do my census for the city of Pahokee, I, I am a resident because my citizens, my citizen's paper, I had to include five people in my household. So my question is, if I did my citizen's papers and I was counted at being a citizen of Pahokee, why can't I get the rental assistance? Self-explanatory right there.
The, the, the stipulation as far as having to live within the city, that's part of the city stipulation. It just, the, the grant that came from the state or the government.
Right.
It, it, it just gives you like titles within those titles is that they, you know, they work from. And, you know, my thing was the committee.
No disrespect, Ms. Sarah. My thing is that when I pay my water, when I pay my water, infestation tax says city of Pahokee. It doesn't say county. My driver's license, listen up what I'm saying, say I live in the city of Pohke. When I did my citizenship, I had to put how many people that's in my household that lives in the city of Pohke. So you guys got accounted for me living in the city of Pahokee. So I don't understand where's this stipulation about this offer money? Who gets this, who don't get that? I'm thinking that the offer money is entitled to everybody that's in Pahokee that meets those requirements. That's crazy. So that means that since I don't live in the city, I don't, I don't get no, nothing from the offer money. Three eight five ten, North Eighty-Six Street, Apartment Four. And I live in Pohke, Florida. My driver's license states that, my citizenship states that. The census paper that I turned in to the state of Florida, it states that. So I know you guys understand what I'm saying about my census papers because it does say that include how many people that lives there at that household. I am accounted for at living in the city of Pohke.
Okay, Ms. Freeman, your time is up. What I would like to request maybe during the, uh, updates of the projects, that Ms. Washington can include some of what your questions were and try to address a few of those concerns so you can have a public, uh, answer to some of them. I know we're not gonna be able to get to them all, but certainly, uh, we can include some of those comments and.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor, no disrespect. When I received this flyer from the city of Pahokee, can you guys have this in Spanish also? We got Hispanic people in our community, they need to know this in Spanish also. This needs to be in Spanish. We got Hispanic people living here. This, Spanish. I go all the way from one end of Pohke to the, to the north, northeast, south and west. And I hand out these flyers. Can I have this in Spanish also? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Bab, I got one question. Were the people in Patchouli Village and Dogland and all those areas counted in the census of Pohke when the offer money was given? They didn't count those people when they gave the offer money? It just counted Z three thousand?
Yeah, I, I, our population was based on our residencies that live within the city limits. For the offer funds, the more folks you had, the more money you received. So we would have loved to include everyone, but it was just basically for the, uh, within the city limits.
Pahokee is five thousand five hundred and thirty-four people. And I'm quite sure it's not five thousand five hundred and thirty-four people live right here in the city. I'm quite sure the kind of people in Patchouli, I'm quite sure the kind of people in Dogland and all the areas. I'm just saying, I'm just saying because I went and checked it. But we can carry on, but I went and checked it and I said, and I know how many blacks here, I know how many whites here, I know how many in every area. It told me how two thousand and some people in Patchouli Village and surrounding there. I think it's like twenty-two hundred.
Yeah.
Three thousand something here. Then they put it all together, come to five thousand five hundred. So I'm saying, when they gave you the offer money, they had to count those people too.
Yeah.
For you to get three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. City Clerk, go, go ahead.
So what I passed out is the map that shows what is city limits in gray for the city of Pahokee. It's in your chairs, I passed out those things. So in addressing Ms. Freeman's concern, uh, just following up on the city limits of Pahokee that in the yellow part is unincorporated urban service area of Palm Beach County. So her address is outside of the gray area. And then regarding water bill, the city of Pahokee has not owned its own water or sewer services since October first of twenty oh nine through the Glades Utility Authority Agreement, with the city giving up its ownership to water to Palm Beach County. Regarding the infestation, uh, we looked at a water bill. This may be infrastructure fee, but that's going to the county.
It says it's in our bill.
We don't own. We don't own our water.
That's right.
We don't own our water.
I live in Dogland.
That's on top of that.
That's why I brought my, my water bill and my light bill and saying Pahokee. And they taking money from Dogland into the infrastructure. So that's like she said, get our assistance, uh, with our rental, rental assistance. Assistance that we need right along with the city of Pohke.
So when we set the parameters of this, we went through a committee. You were on that committee, along with other citizens of Pahokee. They set the boundaries of this program to be such that it's within the boundaries, city limit of Pahokee.
That's what y'all did, not them. Y'all did, y'all disbanded that committee. And your deal, which I wanted to do with you.
This time, City Clerk. Now we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is the May Business of the Month. And we'll have our City Attorney read this into the record.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Business of the Month is Empress Beauty. And a certificate is awarded to Empress Beauty, which is located at one eighty-five East Main Street in Pahokee, Florida, in recognition of outstanding service to the community. It's presented on this twenty-seventh day of June, twenty twenty-three by Mayor Keith W. Bab, Jr., Vice Mayor Claire M. Mervin, Commissioner Derek Bolden, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, Commissioner Sarah Perez and Rodney D. Lucas, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. At this time, I entertain a motion for the adoption of this, uh, resident, uh, certificate of Business of the Month.
Mayor, I move that we will accept the Business of the Month, Empress Beauty.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the approval of the Business of the Month for May. Call for questions. Karen, are you ready for a vote roll call, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. It's Empress Beauty here. At this time, with the commission joining me down on Napoleon, and we're gonna have, after I say just a few comments, Commissioner Perez will actually present the certificate.
Empress Beauty, on behalf of the Focus City Commission, Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioner Derek Bolden, Commissioner Sarah Perez, Commissioner Gonzalez, along with our City Manager and our entire city staff, we congratulate you for winning this award. We thank you for all you do in the community and the service you provide. And at this time, we have our very own Commissioner Sarah Perez officially present you with this certificate.
It is my pleasure to award you this certificate. I was, I wasn't even aware that you were there. I found you by walking the businesses, making sure that you had the, the business loan papers, you knew what was about and all the things that you could do with it. And I found out you were there. I was very impressed with you and your, um, uh, locale. You've done a lot of improvements in there. Uh, you do deserve a state of the art place. And I would like to encourage everyone in the community to support her because the, the, the services that she has, you know, it's something that you will find, you know, in West Palm, Miami, everywhere else, and you don't have to go. I don't want to say too much about it because I want her to speak about her. But, uh, with all that being said, I would like to commend you.
Thank you.
I do want to start off with saying thank you to everyone. Um, I actually am born and raised here. I've moved from Pahokee and moved back. I am really looking forward to seeing some improvement around here. I've been there established for two years and I not only have clientele that comes from Port St. Lucie in Palm Beach. Even though the outer appearance of the business don't look that way, I put a lot of money in the inside, out of my pockets. I would love to see the community grow, improve. We need to work together. Uh, the fighting back and forth is just not gonna give it. And I'm, I'm a forty-year-old, turned forty. This my under twenty-third. And I'm trying to educate the community that I have a nurse here that I've added to my team for mental health, just to piggyback off of the other ladies that stand up here. We do post out massages. I have a sauna inside of my place of business. And I'm not sure if you guys are aware of what a sauna is for. And I specialize in skincare and a lot of other more procedures and everything. But I look forward to the community growing. I know the outer appearance don't look that way, but trust me, I do deserve a state of art. Please take Pahokee to the next level, guys. My address, my home of business, my business is one eighty-five East Main Street. I'm off of Main Street before you get to the McTavern area, you know? Those roads have been leading to there and their roads are nice, but my business don't look to par on the outside. That really hurts my heart for the community. So hopefully, we can grow here, please. Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation honoring former Pahokee Police Officer Donna Marie Savatore. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, this is a proclamation honoring former Police Officer Donna Marie Savatore. Whereas, Miss Donna Marie Savatore was the first female officer to serve the city of Pahokee's Police Department. And whereas, Miss Savatore dedicated her time to the western, western community and especially contributed to the city of Pahokee, working closely with commissioners and staff on improving the lives and safety of the city. And whereas, Miss Donna Marie Savatore was born December twenty-ninth, nineteen sixty-two and went to be with the Lord and Savior on June the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas, Miss Savatore is survived by her mother, Roberta Hatton Savatore, two daughters, Jayla Denise Hinson and Jenna Ruth Hinson, sister Roberta D. Savatore, brothers Frank Savatore III and also several nieces and nephews. And whereas, Miss Savatore was a lifelong and dedicated public servant and graciously touched many lives. She was a retired police officer, I'm, a retired police officer while living in Florida. And whereas, former Police Officer Donna Marie Savatore would be missed greatly by those who worked with her and those who had the pleasure of meeting her. And whereas, I Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor of the City of Pahokee and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby extend our sincere and deepest sympathy to the family of former Police Officer Donna Marie Savatore, honoring former Police Officer, um, this June, June the twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-three, Keith W. Bab, Jr., Mayor, Vice Mayor Claire Mervin, Commissioner Derek Bolden, Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, Commissioner Sarah Perez.
This time, I entertain a motion for the approval and adoption of the proclamation for a former officer. for former Officer of Police Donna Marie Savatore.
Mayor Bab, I move to accept the proclamation honoring former Police Officer Donna Marie Savatore.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the adoption of the proclamation honoring Police Officer Donna Marie Savatore. Call for question. Here and under, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, City Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Are there any family members of Officer Savatore here? Tonight, we'll make sure that the closest relative to her that lives in Pahokee receives this proclamation on behalf.
Chief Savatore?
Should be, well, yeah. Okay, at this time, I turn these last, uh, three, uh, announcements and presentations over to our City Manager to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up would be Central Palm Beach County Chamber of Commerce, Mary Lou. Please come to the mic. And welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for your time. Um, I'm here to share a little bit about the Central Palm Beach County Chamber of Commerce and the Hispanic Chamber of Palm Beach County. And I have a PowerPoint presentation I gave to Val earlier. I'm not sure if you can put that up. You know, I really appreciate everything I'm hearing tonight. And I think it's important that not only you support your local chambers, but regional chambers can be very impactful as well to help with a lot of things. For instance, um, one of the things that were, came up today is the mental health situation. And that's an opportunity for our chamber to share that with our members throughout the county, because there's people that need to be served. Uh, the Central Palm Beach County Chamber, if you wanna go to the next slide, please. The Central Palm Beach County Chamber, uh, and the Hispanic Chamber, we've been serving the western communities and the central, um, part of the county for years. And, uh, it, it shows our mission statement to provide leadership that facilitates and creates a prosperous regional economy and effective advocacy. And, uh, you know, these are some of the things that we focus in on, industry sectors, workforce, housing, education, vocation. And if you'll switch to the next slide, because I think this is the one that's most important for you all. Um, I personally have been, uh, with the chamber for 13 years. I've been the CEO for eight and a half years. And I've been serving, serving on the Glades Readiness Roundtable for eight and a half years. I come out to the Glades area every year, uh, every month to work with our, uh, businesses and our, and with Marsha Andrews and others educators to help make sure that we're supporting education for the Glades area. Just know how, how important that is. We also have a, um, leadership program, which I actually met jungling, uh, attended our leadership program. One of the things that we do every year is we bring out businesses to the Glades, so they can see everything that's so wonderful that's out here. Hey, Regina. And, um, you know, we work with our, our business leaders. And we wanna make sure that we have an opportunity to serve the community. And I think there's opportunities, even with the Hispanic language. When we send out our, um, newsletters, we send it out to the Central Palm Beach County Chamber members and the Hispanic Chamber members. And we can do it in Spanish as well as English for those members that feel that they're, um, have that opportunity to have the first language that they can read. Another thing, Empress Beauty, again, she just left. But, you know, those, those kinds of things are opportunities for us as a chamber to share all the businesses out here. Because as you said, it's, she gets people from Port St. Lucie. She gets people from, uh, Palm Beach County. It's not just, uh, your businesses can, can really benefit from people outside of Pahokee coming in and, and giving their dollars here. So, we just wanna make sure, I don't know if you have a chance to flip to the next one, Val, but, um, these are some of the things that we've been involved in. The Glades Readiness Roundtable, LoR, Marie Antuna, the CEO of the Hispanic Chamber, uh, serves on the LoR. I've attended LoR meetings. Our annual Farm City Luncheon. I don't know how many people have ever attended that at the fairgrounds, but that's our way of highlighting the agricultural community that's such an economic driver. And so, we highlight Pahokee all the time. And our Holiday Parade, we've given scholarships to the Pahokee High School, the middle of high school to come in, be in our parade. We've given out grants to some of the students here. So, we have been supporting Pahokee for many years. And we think it'd be really beneficial for you all to be part of our chamber, so we can help support you all. Any questions for me?
What's the cost?
It depends on, on what you wanna do. But there's a $325 annual membership. There's a, another one's called a supporter level, which is $600. So, it's really up to what you all decide to do. You have opportunities. We just had a legislative update, and I know I extended a limitation to, uh, you all and, and the City Manager. And I don't know if any of you had a chance to come to that. But we had all of our state legislators there, so that you could have an opportunity to speak with them. So, anything we can do, this is something I wanna share. We have an economic summit coming up, and, uh, this is something to discuss all the industries in Palm Beach County. And our keynote speaker is Jimmy Petronas, who is the CFO for the state of Florida. So, maybe there's an opportunity for some of you to ask, like, where's that money that we've been looking for that's come down from the state? Um, our Farm City Luncheon is November 15th. We have that coming up. And the Holiday Parade is December 10th. And then next April, we'll have Triunfo, which is our Hispanic Gala, where we give out scholarships to Hispanic students. So, that's all I have to say. But I just hope that you'll consider that. And, um, you know, anytime you have any questions, I've given you all my business card. Feel free to, um, reach out to me if you have questions. And on the back, you'll see a QR code for the Hispanic Chamber and the Central.
Question, has the city ever been a part of your chamber?
You have in the past, and it's, it's been a while, you know, since I've been there. It, they, you have been. And whenever we used to do our State of the Cities, we, uh, would always invite South Bay, Pahokee, and Belt Lake to come and kinda share. Your city managers from the past have presented. So, it's been a while, but you have been.
You don't know more or less how long ago, when was the last time we were a part of your chamber? And for how long?
Uh, I want, I, I can't give a definitive, but I wanna say probably 2014, 15. I remember in Chandler, Williams was your city manager. You were very engaged. He came and he spoke one time. That was the last time I remember.
Okay.
So. Any other questions? Okay, well, I, I hope you'll take it into consideration. And again, anything we can do to help support you all, please, please let us know. And I, I will say, the thing about fencing, I'm, I'm gonna call a few of our businesses, because that's concerning to me, the fencing around the park. So, maybe we have some vendors that can maybe talk to you all. Thank you so much.
Next up, we have the Black Chamber of Commerce of Palm Beach County. Welcome.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Frank Hayden. I am, uh, the Membership Chair for the Black Chamber. Uh, I served two years as its, uh, President. And I'm gonna spend a little time talking to you. I have a presentation, but, uh, I, I work for the city of West Palm Beach, and I've gone to the commission meetings. And I know they get long and boring, and I don't want to add to that. So, but I, I want to share with you, uh, about our Black Chamber. But I'm gonna tell you a little bit about myself. Uh, I'm a transplant. I came from Detroit, Michigan. Uh, I took a job at the South Florida Water Management District. I worked very closely, uh, with the cities out here. As we were doing our Everglades restoration, it was important to incorporate the businesses and the individuals out here in this community to be a part of that. We've continued on with that whole issue now that I'm part of the Black Chamber. Uh, our whole effort is to assist, uh, businesses, uh, so that they can be successful and participate. And so, I'm hoping, as our counterpart from Central talked about, that you all will consider, uh, becoming a member of the Black Chamber. Uh, we work very closely, uh, with our members. Uh, we have some programs that exist, uh, to assist them, uh, so that they can get better in, in what they, they do. As you know, uh, part of the handicaps for businesses, especially businesses of color, are finances. Uh, we have programs within there through our, uh, members, uh, to assist them in terms of providing some, uh, upfront capital that they might need to be, uh, able to be successful. We also have programs there to teach them how to do proposals, uh, teach them about how to go about getting bonding. Uh, because as you know, we, we need bonding and capital in order to perform on jobs. A lot of times, we, our businesses don't realize that until after they've gotten the project. Uh, because it takes money in order for us to, to, uh, be able to work on projects. Um, the city of West Palm Beach, Palm Beach County, uh, the school district are all members of, uh, the chamber. And so, we would truly, uh, enjoy it if the city of Pahokee also, uh, decided to be a member of our chamber. Uh, as a result, we'll be able to work with your businesses. Uh, I'm sorry that the young lady who has the beauty, uh, left out. Uh, that would be a prime item. Uh, we highlight our businesses. We do, uh, collaboration between other businesses that are part of the Black Chamber. Uh, we give them an opportunity to highlight, uh, what it is that they do, uh, to the public. Uh, and it makes them, uh, a lot more successful. Because as you know, we're a lot stronger and better as a group than we are as individuals. And so, I don't wanna take up any more of your time. I know you all have a heavy agenda. I will send, uh, information, uh, to your City Manager or the deputy, uh, to provide to you all, so that you have an idea of what it is we do. Uh, and I know you asked Commissioner about what the cost is. And it, it's like the other chamber. It depends on how and what you want to do as part of, uh, our chamber. For businesses, it starts as low as $100 to as much as $300 to be a member for a business. So, I hope you seriously consider, uh, being a member of the Black Chamber. And I wanna thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for giving me this opportunity and this little time, uh, to share with you about what I think is one of the jewels in Palm Beach County, and that is the Black Chamber. Thank you very much. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be, wouldn't have to answer.
Have you, uh, has Pahokee ever been a part of your chamber?
I'm sorry, sir.
The same question I asked the lady. Has Pahokee ever been a part of your chamber?
No, sir. And that's why I'm here, trying, trying to recruit you in terms of being a part. And I will say this, we are partners with, uh, our counterpart here, uh, with the other chambers, uh, as well, because it, we're all after the same thing. We wanna help businesses. And we can do that if we work together as a team. So, uh, you'll get that same connection, being a part of us, as you will if you're a part of the Central.
How long have you been operating?
This Black Chamber was, will be celebrating our 20th year, uh, next year. Yes, sir. Um, and I apologize for that. Yeah, that, that's our fault. We need to do a better job. And that, that's one of the pieces we've been struggling with, is getting the word out to let people know who we are and what it is that we're attempting to do.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, when we speak about the Hispanic Chamber and the Black Chamber, is that specific for that group?
No. No, it, it, and I'm sure my counterpart would tell you. In the Hispanic Chamber, they have people of color, black, uh, white. And it's the same thing. It is just the title that we go by to express our chamber. It is not exclusive to only people who look like me. Which I think is a good thing. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you so much, uh, for both of your presentation. And I would just like to ask the Commission really to consider all three, not only the local, but maybe the two regional. Uh, because what we wanna try to do is aid and assist in our businesses growing and expanding, and that may be a perfect way to do it. I think even with membership, you know, three, we're talking about less than $1,000. That's a commitment we should, want to at least consider. Not asking for a vote at this point, but want to consider that.
I, I should've mentioned to you, the, the beauty of the Central Palm Beach County Chamber and the Hispanic Chamber came into our fold, if you will, as our partner. When you're a member of one, you're a member of both. So, you get two for one for ours and one for the election.
Thank you.
So, all we have to do is join one chamber, and we're members of all three?
No. If you join the Central Palm Beach County Chamber, you're a member of the Hispanic Chamber of Palm Beach County. We're under one umbrella. So, because we do have those, you know, you asked a good question. But the Hispanic Chamber and even the Central, we've always had a very diverse, we have a very diverse board, we have a very diverse membership, always has been that way. But there's some cultural events that the Hispanic Chamber will take the lead on. Triunfo being one of them, which is the scholarship for Hispanic students. Uh, you know, during Hispanic Heritage Month, they'll take the lead on that. But we really work, because when it comes down to it, business is business. We're here to be advocates for business, no matter what your ethnicity, your cultural background is.
So, basically, you're saying it's just two chambers for one price?
Right. We always say it's a BOGO, by one, one, three, on the, on the Central Hispanic side, yes. But the Black Chambers is separate. But we do work very well too. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Mr. Lucky, who had done the Invasion on the Muck, the Car and Bike Show. He says he's running late, so we can move on there.
Yes. Right. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, uh, which consists of two items, the June 13, 2023 City Commissional Workshop Meeting Minutes and the June 13, 2023 City Commission Meeting Minutes. At this time, if there is no objection, I entertain a motion for the, uh, move and approve of the Assent Agenda.
Mayor Bab, I move to accept the June 13, 2023 City Commission Workshop Minutes. Do we have to do them separately, or?
No, I think we can do it together.
As well as the June 20, June 13, 2023 City Commission.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bolden and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the acceptance of the, our Consent Agenda, which consists of both the June 13 City Commission Workshop Minutes Meeting and the City Commission Minutes Meeting. Call for question. Here and under, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bolden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have, uh, our old business. This is a discussion of existing activity of a previously held event. City Manager.
None, sir.
Thank you, sir. And we have public hearings and ordinances. We don't have any. Next on the agenda is resolution. We have several of those. First resolution is Resolution 2023-30. City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the MOU to execute a memorandum of understanding between Career Source Palm Beach County, Inc., and the City of Pahokee. Attached hereto is Exhibit A, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation of Resolution 2023-30?
Yes, sir. This is a memorandum of under, uh, understanding with Career Source, where they supply interns to work on a daily basis for a period of one year within, uh, city departments at no charge to the city. The city has partnered with, uh, them in the past, supplying, with them supplying us with interns in the program, and it's been a great success. Staff recommends we enter into a MOU with Career Source, which will be a positive impact for the interns and the city.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission?
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, um, one of the issues that came up when we were going through the document was that the manager intended for it to be a five-month period? Is that still correct? They were going to change the contract?
They did change, they did do that.
Okay, I thought you wanted five months and not the year. Okay, so you had them make it. Okay, got it. No problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City Commission, having heard Resolution 2023-30, properly read into the minutes by our City Attorney, properly explained by our City Manager, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to, um, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-30.
It has been moved by Commissioner- It has been moved by Commissioner Perez and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty. Call for questions. Here in honor, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murley?
Yes.
Mayor Barr?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Next, we have Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, authorizing the City Manager to enter into a grant agreement, number LPA zero-two-five-two, between the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the City of Pahokee for East Lake Village Storm Water Improvements. Attached hereto is Exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. This uh, is an extension of the East Lake Village Storm Improvement Grant, LPA zero-two-five-two. This um, agreement would terminate, so we're here to ask for an extension. The new grant period would include an expiration date of March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, and it will include the agreement amount of six hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, as per the FIDAP, uh, Florida Department of Environmental Protection Agreement between the City of Pahokee and the contract, LPA zero-two-five-two, East Lake Village Storm Water Improvement Project. Staff recommends to approve the Florida Department Environmental Agency Agreement.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having heard our City Attorney properly read the resolution into the record, properly explained by our City Manager, what is your pleasure?
May I move to accept Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one?
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one. Call for questions.
I have some.
Commissioner Perez?
Okay, um, is this an extension, or is this a, a, a new? A new contract?
This is just a, uh, same contract with less dollars, because monies have been spent already, uh, over in, in East Lake Village. Had you been by the Sea of Lake?
No, I haven't been by.
It's really looking good over there.
Yeah. Uh, well, my question is, uh, this amount that you have, first of all, have the city been uh, reimbursed for any work done there? And if it has, how much have they been reimbursed?
Ms. Adams, do you have the detail?
Mayor, Commission, Commissioner Perez, the city has been reimbursed. I don't have the exact amount of dollars, um, but it has been reimbursed. This uh, grant agreement, FDP terminated the old grant agreement with the, the former number was LP fifty-eleven thirteen. They terminated that grant agreement, sent us a new grant agreement, which is in front of you, with the amount that they have on their books. We have reimbursement that is being submitted, so that money will be depleted out of there.
Okay, and?
Look on page fifty-five, Commissioner Perez, and it'll break down the numbers for you too.
Oh, yeah, those are some of the numbers that actually I wanted to go over. Are these to be the same numbers that we used originally, that we started with?
Those would be the numbers that we started with. When I send in, um, the report that should be sent in next week, those numbers will be different, because it will start to narrow down what has been completed.
Okay, 'cause um, on the original contract, the prices are not the same.
Yes, ma'am. On the original contract, your timeline and task item amounts were different, so those are minus what FDP has done reimbursements for.
So, for instance, in the pre-design agreement on the original was like thirty-five thousand dollars, and on this one, it says ninety-three hundred. So that means that out of the thirty-five thousand, you, you only got ninety-three hundred dollars remaining?
That's what's the balance left on there. And it, it may be less than that, once I calculate up and get with uh, Finance Department, so that we send in uh, reimbursement.
Okay, um, I deduct it, um, I don't, I don't have, I requested it, and I thought that it was going to be brought to the meeting tonight, but I found out that being a Commissioner doesn't pull no weight when you want documents to be submitted at the meeting. I guess it's just, you know, you put a request and wait till staff has time to provide me the information. I know that, um, I saw, I saw of August the ninth, you know, uh, well, for, for the, for the, let me get my papers here. For the engineer, which, which it already included, you know, the design and, and all these things on here, uh, just for the engineer alone, we have paid sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. And that was only as of July twenty-twenty-one. Since then, recently, MDO came here, and first we, we, uh, or you guys voted to pay him twenty-some thousand dollars, and then he came back and was another forty-some thousand dollars. I don't have the exact amount, that's why I wanted to look at the thing. But, um, out of the sixty-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty-two that we paid him, the, his contract amount was eighty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. That left fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars. And that's not included what, what we have paid him since July of twenty-one. So if you take that amount, and you take the amount that we've paid Reebok, which I know that after you guys came back, you made two separate payments to Reebok, and ninety that he had received the same day, the last day that it, that for you and for uh, Mr. Lucas, he got ninety thousand dollars. Then when you guys came back, they got another ninety thousand dollars, and then it was a hundred and something thousand. So if you take all that amount, and you deduct it from the seven fifty, I don't come out with that six hundred and some thousand. That's why I wanted all the records.
So, and that's why I'm saying, once we submit the reimbursements, I can have accurate numbers for you. FDP, our numbers have to match up with FDP. Seven hundred and fifty thousand is the total amount of the grant award. If we expend that, that is all the funds we will receive from FDP, regardless of whether it goes towards MDO or Reebok. Um, in reference to uh, MDO's contract, his contract was for eighty-four thousand, I can't remember if it was changed.
Two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And then the last, we asked for, for him to be able to complete what needs to be completed, to close out certification, because we have to have an engineer certification on this project. I believe when we came to commission to extend his contract, it was for about twenty-seven thousand. Um, so that will be minus this amount. Whatever he has submitted, I just received a pay application for fourteen thousand, so that, that fourteen thousand will be minus out of that twenty-seven, and minus out of what is left in our funding from FDP.
Well, according, according to, he's only got fifteen thousand, four twenty-three to make that eighty-four to seventy-five.
He's made his eighty-four. The eighty-four has been made. We have a zero PO for eighty-four thousand left. That PO has been zeroed out.
So we don't owe any more money to, to the engineer?
No, we have a new contract with our engineer to close, to be able to close out this project of twenty-seven thousand.
That was included in, in, in this amount?
That's included in your eighty-four?
Yes, it is.
No, ma'am.
I have it right here.
I'll get the numbers, um, do, once I meet with Finance Department, and I'll be able to supply them for you.
And whatever we've paid Reeb, so this eighty-four?
Reebok as well.
Whatever you paid Reebok is deducted from the seven fifty, so that's what you should have left.
Yes, Reebok's contract was, I believe, five hundred and seventy-four thousand and some change, or something like that. So Reebok has a separate contract that is separate from MDO.
So what would happen to the difference?
The difference? That difference, there is, there is no difference. Well, let me take that back. If there is a difference of funds that will go towards our project, so if that means that there is additional things that FDP will approve for those to be done, so that we can expend every single dollar, because we don't want to send back money at all, then I'll take that to FDP and say, can we use these additional dollars for, within that scope?
So this, in other words, this will be for unforeseen, unforeseen things?
Well, it won't, it will not be for unforeseen things. It will be determined that per rec, per engineer's recommendations, if it makes the project better, if it will enhance our project, then we can utilize it on that. If not, those funds will be returned to FDP. If we do not, but that project was broken down according to, when we submitted our legislative request to the state, we had to submit a work plan. That work plan was submitted per cost estimates from the engineer. So with the estimate, and mind you, since that um, legislative request and that grant was funded, costs have gone up, as you know. So it may seem like, oh, we're going to have money left over, but when you take into account the costs that have escalated, then we'll be right on target with what we needed to spend, what we requested.
So my, my question is, um, is, is that even fair? Because this thing, this thing is back from twenty-seventeen, and here we are in two thousand and twenty-three, and we're still, you know, halfway through it.
So, that request was FDP sending their new grant number, because they terminated their old number, for whatever reason.
Yeah, but it says seven twenty-one-two, uh, the expiration that they have is uh, September of twenty-sixth. Seven-one-seventeen through nine-thirty-twenty-sixth.
Are the task deliverable dates. Those are the task deliverable dates. On your new agreement, they gave FDP assigned a new uh, deadline date. FDP, not the request of John Julian, not the request of the city. And that was FDP, um, final completion date.
So, so they gave you, they gave you another, um, I guess, grant, extension grant, is, is what it is, right?
When they sent?
It's an extension.
When they sent LPA zero-two-five-two, on their contract, that was the date that they put down. We received that from FDP. There was no request that was made.
Okay, so I'm, so, so on this contract, you don't have to do no engineering, no design, no this, no that?
That contract is the exact same as the other. So all the task deliverable items that was requested in the first one, the same things, same items are in this one.
Well, this has project timeline and budget details.
That's.
It doesn't say no, uh?
That's how the original, um, agreement was made too. When they send their agreement, they give you timelines, they give you deliverables. It's a whole slew of documents, a reporting page that has been, be submitted, certifications that has, be submitted. All those items are included in that grant agreement, as saying what's the previous grant agreement.
Mm-hmm, I understand that one. And it also, on here, it says to, to look at Exhibit A, uh, but I couldn't find what you were saying on, or, or what I'm supposed to look on Exhibit A.
Exhibit A is the grant agreement that you have before you.
It says the grant work plan.
The grant work, work plan is included in, in the exhibit.
Yeah, yeah, Attachment Number Three. So I went to Attachment Number Three, and I couldn't find it. So can you tell me where I could find that? Another question I have is, is, is this grant, uh, supposed to be audited? And if it was audited, when?
And when you say audited, you mean by FDP?
Yeah, whoever audits the grant?
So FDP, we submit our single audit report if we have expended seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that year. They ask for their single audit report. We have not expended seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year. So if they come back and ask for audit, yes, it's audited.
So in other words, if you?
But do they come, if, if they have come in and asked for a specific audit for this grant, that has not occurred since I've been back?
Yeah, and they probably won't either, because the task is not going to finish in a year, so you're not gonna, the grant is seven fifty, and you're not going to finish it in one year, so this, this thing is not going to be audited.
But that, that is how they deem that language in their grant. So if they ask for, if we expend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, in next year, twenty-twenty-four, they'll ask for a single audit. And that'll be provided. What attachment was that? Attachment Number Three? The grant work plan?
Yeah, scope of work, uh?
Is on page fifty-three, should be. Fifty-three, fifty-four. And fifty-five?
So the grant work plan is the, is, is all the pages?
Yes, ma'am, because it breaks down and explains what the project back, background is, job description, the tasks.
So the scope of work is the original scope of work?
The scope of work is the original scope of work. No change orders have been presented to you all for this project, I don't believe, and it has been.
And, and I was looking at the map, um, and this is supposed to be to keep the whole area from flooding?
Correct.
Uh, so, so what area does exactly include on there? Because to this day, um, um, you know, I went there after they left, supposedly they had already cleaned it up, and then they came and they cleaned it again, but the canal was filled in partially, which the, the engineer, when I asked him, he said, well, no, that's going to be excavated and piped, so, so when they left the first time, it wasn't, they, they didn't do what they were supposed to have done.
They did do what they were supposed to have done, and as we've stated to those residents that live out there, when you dump, it makes it worse, it inhabits. Mind you, there was a period of time that no work was being performed, so work stopped. But as Mr. Lucas stated, since even the last time that uh, Reebok and MDO were present, we have a whole lot of work that has been completed. And I can provide the photos for you, or just driving out, and we can take a look and take a walkthrough.
Well, what part was the part that, that was, um, that was cleaned up, uh, again, because it was covered?
So it's not just what you see as the canal, it also includes those culverts, and those culverts and those lines that run a lot, amaryllis, they clean down there. There's things that you don't see, just standing out, that takes the back and takes different equipment for them to be able to flush through. So it wasn't just canal that they cleaned, the visible canal. It also included those culverts that run underneath. So if they're not clean, then that water isn't able to flow, which causes backup in the canal. And you have to remember, there's, at a certain And you have to remember, there's, at a certain point, um, the canal also belongs to, uh, East Beach Control, Water Control District.
Yeah, which they maintain and, and they keep the way that it's worked to handle.
Correct.
Which canal are you all talking about?
The canal that runs along McClure Seventh behind, mm-hmm, that sits between McClure and...
Where the valley is, you know, nobody, nobody doing nothing about it. They just went back to work today, day.
Well, I have photos and they've been...
Yeah, they just went back today, they didn't stop.
Well, rain does impact, so when they do some work, it rains.
So the canal, let me, let me clear this. The canal is, it's, it's part of the back of East Lake? The, the back of those homes, all that area behind it?
So the, certain areas behind that, um, and I have to pull up the, pull up that map.
Cause I, I've been to a gentleman's house that the water almost reaches his door. And that's because his, his house is high.
And you also have to remember that certain points, we don't own those canals. Those canals are also owned by the farmers. So that does not include our dollars to be able to clean their canals. We clean what we are responsible for. So if farmers aren't keeping, there, and East Beach District is not keeping their portion of it, then it's going to impact.
So what is the sense for us to spend money and clean it and clean it? If you're saying that, that that part is, it's not our responsibility, but it connects to our, to our...
We have to clean it because if we don't clean it, then nothing's ever done. And it is working in unison with East Beach District and our canal, so the, I mean, our farmers, so that we're all on one page. And so eventually, we're hoping that, yes, we're all working together to keep it clean, to stop the, the flooding. That goes along with the improvements to the drainage. Same thing, this project is just like what we did in Glade Citizens Villa. Because we have flooding out there. Exact same thing that we did. It was a stormwater project.
So if this, if this project takes the three different, uh, entities, shouldn't this, um, meeting or, 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 you know, coming to some kind of, because I mean, if you're saying that it's this one, that one, and that one, you got three different entities that are, that are responsible for that one drainage?
Not just the one drainage is what connects. So...
Well, that one canal.
But those, the contractors, our engineer is in conversation with David Davis, East Beach Water Control District. So they're having conversation. They're working together.
Anybody talking to the farmers?
I don't know if they specifically have had a conversation. I can't answer that.
And when you say farmers, do you know what farmer we're talking?
I don't know off the top of my head. I will have to go pull files.
Okay, are there in addition questions? Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
He said yes.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez? Mayor Baugh?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous votes. Our final resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida approving a grant award from the Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County regarding the American Rescue Plan Act Round Two Final Instalment for the Parks and Recreation After School Program, providing for adoption of representation, providing for an effective date.
Yeah, we just voted on it.
No, I said yes.
Just a clarification. We are on Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three?
You are on thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Yes, sir.
Okay. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, sir. The City of Pahokee is in receipt of a Florida Department of Transportation Economic Development Transportation Fund for Phase Four Resurfacing of the City of Pahokee Streets Contract G one-six-zero-five-FM four-four-three-three-six-three-dash-two-dash-five-four-dash-zero Supplemental Agreement.
He reading it wrong. Thirty-two, thirty-two, thirty-two.
It's the E L C.
Early Learning Coalition.
Okay, sorry. Early Learning Coalition of Palm Beach County was awarded the City of Pahokee's Parks and Recreation Program with the American Rescue Act Plan Childcare Stabilization Subgrant Funding for the After School Program. This early learning, uh, ARPA Childcare Stabilization Grant Round Two Final Instalment is in an amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars will be used for the Parks and Recreation After School Program. Parks and Rec was awarded this grant funding in June of twenty twenty-three. Staff recommends approval of the E L C ARPA Childcare Stabilization Subgrant Round Two Final Installation.
Thank you, City Manager. City Commission, having heard this resolution properly read into the minutes by a city clerk, city attorney, properly explained by a city manager, what is your pleasure?
Uh, Baugh, I move to accept Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two.
There's second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly second by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two. Call for questions. Hearing none?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Perez?
Um, what, what is this money going to be used for? I know it's after school, but what?
So, uh, they had monies for, uh, different programs and trips that they initially had. And so there was a surplus in money through the Early Learning Coalition and they blessed the City of Pahokee with those funds to be used in that program, you know, for the kids that are in there right now.
Okay, um, I mean, I don't know how, how, uh, we have to, if this has to be, uh, something that we have to vote to put on the agenda, but, um, I, I would like to see each department's budget attached to the, to the original budget. I'd like to see what their budget is, what, all they're going to use it for, um, every department itemized. Cause the budget's not a budget unless you have all those line items in it. Our budget, I'm sorry to tell you, it's not, it's not a budget. It's, 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 it's part of a budget.
Any additional questions? Hearing none. Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Baugh?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Resolution passed by unanimous vote. Our final resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, City Attorney.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida approving an amendment to the state-funded grant supplemental agreement number seven between the City of Pahokee, Florida and the Florida Department of Transportation, authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment. Attached here too is exhibit A, providing for adoption of representations, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. City Manager, could you give us a brief explanation?
Yes, um, as I had jumped ahead on this, this is, uh, a supplemental agreement number seven. This is for the City of Pahokee time to complete the resurfacing of Phase Four Streets. Supplemental number seven is a legislative allocation of two hundred and ten thousand dollars. The terms of agreement is from June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And it's for the following streets, West Third Street from Carissa Drive to South Lake Avenue, West Second Street, West Fifth Terrace, Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. And staff recommends approval of, uh, F dot Phase Four Supplemental Agreement Number Seven.
Thank you. City Commission, having heard Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three properly read into the minutes by our city attorney, properly explained by our city manager, what is your pleasure?
Uh, Baugh, I move to accept Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bowden and properly second by Vice Mayor Mervin for the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. Call for questions.
Um, I don't, I don't, this is not really a question, but, um, this is supplemental agreement number seven. Another suggestion, when, I mean, some of us up here are, are new commissioners, we don't know about, uh, supplemental agreement one through six. So it would be nice to include, uh, the previous one so that we know what it is and so that we know, and also this is Phase Four. So Phase One, Two, and Three, uh, you know, it would be nice to see what they were, what streets were supposed to have been done uh, so that we could follow through on it. Cause I don't know what Phase One, Two, and Three, what, what cover, what streets were done, how much we spent, um, and you talk about one, two, three. Oh, and also I want to know, when you say West Second Street, is it from, from one end to the other?
It, um, do you have a breakdown for them? It's on, uh...
Page seventy-one.
So look at page seventy-one. Okay, thank you.
West Second Street covers from Rodden, no, covers from, I believe it is South Lake all the way down to Amarillo.
So West Second is from Second Street to where?
To Amarillo.
And West Fifth Terrace?
West Fifth Terrace. West Fifth Terrace is from, uh, I will, I will have to look at the map on there, but I believe it goes to...
Is that it, like a dead end or?
Yeah, it runs to the dead, that dead end. So it runs to that, that little strip from, uh, Rodden to the dead end.
That hasn't been resurfaced before?
And the phases, I will have to send you the phases because I don't want to misspeak, um, but the Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three.
Okay, and, uh, M L K Boulevard, from where to where?
M L K runs from the entire M L, road of M L K.
All the way to Barfield?
From Barfield all the way down to South Lake.
South Lake?
I'm sorry, it runs all, yeah, it runs all the way to Amarillo. My apologies, yes.
Amarillo. Amarillo cuts around the curve too. So it doesn't go from Barfield all the way to a crossover? Crosswalk?
Crosswalk.
Oh, it crosses all the way, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Baugh?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Now we'll move to new business presentation by the City Manager of Activity of Upcoming Events, if any.
I will, uh, address that in the City Manager Report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll move to the Mayor's Report. Just to remind, the Commissioner Bowden will be selecting the business of the month for June, uh, at our next commission meeting. And I have in our recommending, uh, Benny Everett the Third to fill the Pahokee Housing Authority Board vacant seat. I would ask the clerk, uh, to submit that information to the Housing Authority so they can be in their process. Initially, we had one prior to, uh, pass Everett, uh, but there was a potential conflict there, so we moved to the second. I think there was additional one or two others, uh, in consideration also, but that's the selection of the mayor. I would ask Jeff for confirmation from the, uh, City Commission, uh, on that appointment.
Mayor, uh, when was the deadline to, to give you the recommendation?
Uh...
Cause I have somebody that I wanted to recommend.
Yeah, the deadline was by the, uh, I think last week, we, we said it, uh, at our last commission meeting, uh, we tried to get some additional people just for looking at application to make sure we had a cross-section that was fair to everyone. But that deadline did elapse. And I went with the ones that two that had submitted it in a, in a...
Yeah, I was, I mean, the first I heard was when you mentioned it here, but I didn't know when the deadline was.
City Clerk, you're saying so?
As of today, we only received two applications for that position and both were forwarded to Housing Authority. We're waiting for them to give clearance on both of them before I bring them to the commission, to the mayor. Because they're trying to make sure there's no conflict with each circuit on the board.
I, the, the two, I, I checked with the Housing Authority. They had a, a potential conflict on the first and...
And she said she was going to get back with me.
Mr. Everett didn't have a conflict, so I'm going forward with my selection and I'm having the board not confirm.
She didn't tell me, Mr. Everett. She told me she was going to get back with me.
I'm telling you now though, I'm just giving you the information. It's already done.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
So the person that, or whoever it is that, um, Commissioner Perez is mentioning, um, is pretty much close to that person?
Yes, it is.
Because they didn't leave the deadline?
Right.
Was that through the city that they had to apply or through the housing authority?
Uh, the city. We asked for that information to be posted on our website so people who was interested could at least put in an application if they decided they wanted to be considered. This particular, uh, position, uh, for some reason, how the Housing Authority have their, uh, bylaws of appointment of the mayor, but we always just ask for ratification from the, uh, tire commission. But I did put it out there, any one, even the commissioners wanted to, uh, encourage someone to apply to go, go ahead and do so.
I misunderstood. I thought that, you know, we were supposed to give you our suggestion.
Right.
You know, but I didn't know that.
Right.
Living in the city limits, right?
Uh...
If I correctly call that's what...
They, they saw the initial application and they looked at that address and all. I don't know if that's one of the qualifications. I may assume it maybe, but I wasn't sure. It say you definitely had to leave. I would assume I put it that way and that's just an assumption of mine. But they did look at the address on the application, so they're aware.
They don't have to be in the city limits for the public kind of housing authority.
Isn't everybody on the, on staff over there from Pahokee?
They, they in Pahokee, but they're not, they're not in the limits. Cause it's housing authorities to carry.
Right.
And we just didn't want to hold them up any longer. I think they'd been, this, this vacancy had been at least some month.
But you don't have to be in the city limit because it's not in the jurisdiction of the city limits.
I'm talking about referring to the board though, the board members.
We don't point their requirements. They have their own requirements.
That's what I was asking. It's one of the requirements had to be, had to be living in the city.
They do, the Frey and Village, Pageant Island, that's county. The office itself is.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. I'll see y'all next week.
Okay.
I ain't gonna sit here and be listening to City Manager chill as I see you.
If, if there is a motion for the confirmation of this appointment?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Vice Mayor Mervin and properly second by Commissioner Perez to, uh,... to uh approve the confirmation and appointment of the Mayor's selection of the Pohokee Housing Authority uh vacant Board, Bennett Everett III. Call for questions? Hearing none, you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Bass?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you Commissioners, motion passed by unanimous vote. That concludes the Mayor's Report, and now we'll move to the Report of the City Manager.
Thank you, sir. So, on the follow-up, we, I went over the address of eight, I mean, third, three, eighty-five, ten North, Eighty-sixth Street, and it was confirmed that it's outside city limits, and it's in unincorporated Palm Beach County. I attached a map. Also regarding the water bill, went through those things that uh was a follow-up. So, the flashback update, I have company coming out this Thursday, the twenty-ninth, in the AM. Uh, also, we're working on the RFP for the repairs, um, we'll be able to determine what, what issues they are with the pump, or actually the pump, or, or what, so we can get extensive tear-down on Thursday, which is the uh June twenty-ninth. Swimming pool is being cleaned out this week, and uh the pool is being filled up so that we can test for leaks and assess the pool, the date for that is uh July sixth in the AM. Algae bloom update, staff continues to monitor the lake situation and have begun to power wash the pier, and have, uh, we have an outside contractor servicing our five circulators. Two of our circulators are, are not in service right at the moment, one has a um connection on the end of it, it's electrical, that they have to send out, so it'll probably be down a week, and then um they just came out today and looked at one of our uh circulators, just as you look right into the uh, where the tugboat area is, that one's out, so they're, hopefully we'll get that back in a couple of days. They took that one with them, and so we got four circulators sitting there in the uh pier with, with three of them working. Staff is still preparing the fleet and take-home vehicle policy, our goal is to have it before you guys by the July twenty-fifth um commission meeting. Public Works is working on developing a seven-day week uh work schedule during this hurricane season, with a person being on call uh twenty-four hours. Annexation, staff is completing a survey questionnaire for adjacent residents, uh, those in the Pohokee Housing Authority to complete, and we are developing a cost for annexation. H R received all five City Manager evaluations back, I'm in the process of scheduling meetings with each Commissioner to go over them. Uh, also, I sent you the, all of you, the email, and with the tally sheet of all the responses. Capital Improvement Projects, Jodrellan went over the Phase Four, we did an extension tonight. Uh, McClure, we're uh looking at finalizing things with WGI Engineering for the design limits and overview of the cost of the project. Basically, East Lake Village, I, we went over that and went with uh approving the new number. Also, uh, on MLK, basically, it is uh in Phase One, working with WGI, and we've completed the boundary map, now we just gotta go record it, and then we are uh gonna go over pricing for removal of all the items that Jodrellan had mentioned, and uh cost of replacing the things that we've removed, so we're working on the RFP for that. And then Barfield, uh, as you've seen, it's really installing a lot of pipes along the road, and things are beginning to come together. Parker Building, uh, we need to take stronger measures for compliance with them, uh, we didn't take them to uh the magistrate last month, so we, we need to see the next time schedule I get with staff, and see how we can best uh um either foreclose or, or, or look at what are our options, uh, I'll speak with Legal to get some uh direction. Public Works is scheduling signs, storm drain cover replacements, and identifying streets for minor repairs and sidewalks. Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council is seeking a grant to assist the City of Pohokee with our evaluation and appraisal review, which is called the EIR, and a comprehensive plan uh through D E O. And also, we, we're seeking a uh technical assistance grant with them to help uh educate our, our, our staff. Tomorrow, Palm Beach County League of Cities Luncheon, uh, you know, it starts at noon, but usually we're there by eleven-thirty, San Rourvier Beach Marina. Also outstanding items, we're, we're still pending the audit, the inspectors still go ongoing with their investigation, and um we're looking at FDEP contract extension discussions, Treasury Coast Regional Planning, like I said, technical assistance grant, all other things mentioned up high, we need to update our GIS mapping through G, through D E O grant, uh, we're pending approval from them, we did a letter support uh to D E O for the assistance, so I'll, I'll know more. Uh, staff is uh going over our central business district core overlay uh to uh get with uh WGI for our planning, and uh trying to put things together so we can sit down with Legal and, and prepare things for when we think the next app board will be assembling. And then I would just wanted to let the citizens know, uh, warning, be careful before signing with any contractors coming through the neighborhood soliciting for repairs and replacements through state programs. If you are replacing roofs, electrical services, HVAC, windows, solar panels, plumbing, all these items require the contractor to come to City Hall and pull a building permit, so I just wanted to make people aware of that, because we've had some issues with things being done and no permits pulled. City Hall be closed July fourth, also, July fourth is um event, we're having fireworks, uh, our event's from six to nine-thirty, next commission meeting is July eleventh, six PM. That concludes my report, sir.
Some question or two, on the public work developed in a seven-day work week during hurricane season, with a person on a twenty-four-hour call system, uh, I mean, it can happen, though, but we hadn't had a hurricane like ten years in to have...
So, we get a lot of calls, Mayor, about uh things falling in the streets, things that wait from Friday or Saturday until Monday to be picked up, so I was just trying to be more proactive at looking at, trying to deal with it.
Well, let's look at the calls too involved in this, I mean, to me, seven days a week through hurricane season, which hurricane season, huh?
I think he just means on call.
Yeah, but they're caused to be on call.
Yeah, once they clock in, they'll be on, they'll cost us.
Only when they're needed.
Yeah, as is needed, I will, I will assume that.
And I don't call them if I have to.
If you're, if you're a staff, and you're designated as an on-call person, in some cases, it does clock in when you have to be on call when you go out. Some instances, you get paid for that twenty-four hours that you're on call, because you got to be on standby, you can't go out somewhere, you got to be available to meet that call, so all I'm saying is, this is a cost associated with it, you know, so we want to at least look at that.
As is, if there's something, you know, not just...
Yeah, or when it happened, or maybe even when, when, when a watch is a...
A warning.
A warning, a sudden, just not hurricane, I think with hurricane season, what, sixty days and ninety days?
Well, I always thought it was from June through October.
To November.
So, what I'm saying, that's a long time.
So, you're saying past Halloween, okay.
Past November.
I'm just, I asked to consider maybe doing it during a particular event, or a threat is out there brewing, that you need that, but just a blanket, twenty-four hours during hurricane season, you know, we're talking about just one staff gonna be doing this? Are they gonna rotate it, or how's that going?
Well, we're just thinking in teams of three or four, and break them up over the seven-week period, that's a seven-day period. You know, maybe, maybe it's just uh on-call is just the supervisors, maybe it's just Paul and AJ, uh, you know, we're just putting together the numbers and uh wanted to address service, because I, I get a lot of calls, Jodrellan get calls regarding stuff down or, or flooding, so I got the guys going out uh and, and looking at areas such as uh Shai Island and correcting things there, then going around to what our storm uh drain things are, and trying to start cleaning those things out to reduce flooding.
And again, if you limit, I'm, I'm not saying you are, but if you do limit it to just like the supervisors, that's even additional cost, because those are the higher-paid employee, and then you got to look at a, a take-home vehicle, somebody on call, normally, they, they're gonna be used a lot, utilizing a take-home vehicle, so there's a lot of consideration here, but...
Yes, sir.
When you mean, when you say seven-day on-call period, how, how, I mean, I don't understand how that works.
I was just trying to cover seven days, you know, so basically, we're just trying to cover for two more days, you got five days in the, in the week, Monday through Friday, so how do I offer services? Offer services for uh those other two days, and it, I was just looking at, like, basically what you guys are saying, on-call, as needed, so... But I, I didn't wanna, I don't wanna lend out any cars for the hurricane season until we got the policy done, so uh we're, we had initially started some things, and I didn't think it addressed, after I had a conversation uh with Ms. Norris Weeks, that I addressed it, so I went more fleet.
So, so, so for me to understand, you're saying if we get a hurricane threat?
Good to me.
You want to have staff on call for seven days? How does that...
No, just, just basically the weekend, because Monday through Friday, they, they've already worked, and if there's anything that's going on, I can easily call the supervisors, they go...
So, you're talking about if we, if we have a threat, or the hurricane went by, or a storm went by, and it's on the weekend, you want to be able to call somebody on the weekend and tell them, hey, this happened, go, go take care of it?
Yes, sir.
Though we have someone automatically doing the hurricane warning, or, or um whatever, someone's already in the command on a twenty-four-hour watch anyway, I'm, I'm saying, usually that's the City Manager, probably the DEP, and AJ usually are the ones that's doing the twenty-four-hour watching, when there's a warning or something's happening anyway. I think that's always been that way.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a question, um, to the City Manager, the updates on the floating docks with the DP, what is the updates on that?
So, um, we've had two companies come out, one's given us numbers, then it just had two electricians, two electrical companies give us numbers, and then we're working on the RFP, and then we gotta send it through Legal to look over it before we put it out for bid.
Another question, maybe this has to go to Mayor, to the Attorney, is there a way, because I know this is a pressing thing, I know, I always ask about this, because I know we are on a timetable with those floating docks, is there a way, or is there something we can do to expedite um getting, getting this, this done?
Yeah, I do not believe this needs to be taken out for bid, this could be expedited through an emergency um vendor that the City selects, should the manager bring that vendor back?
We ain't doing none of that, we're putting that out for RFP.
So...
We ain't looking for no private.
So, if, if, if that's the case, through the, through Mayor, through the Attorney, if we can do this as an emergency, because I know we're on a timeline, and if that's the way that we could do that, to get those floating docks done, there, I know, well, I'll wait till we get to that part of the agenda.
Okay, since there are no additional questions, we'll move to the City Attorney Report.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we'll move to future agenda items of Commission, if any.
I have one, Mayor. Um, going back to the floating docks, um, Mayor, I would like to make a motion, and I would hope that my colleagues will follow me, if they would know, that it's very important to get these floating docks um done, and we are on a timeline, we are on, we're not to be fined through the, from the state, from the city, also with the repercussion of not getting this done. We just heard from Legal that we can do this on an emergency basis to um complete getting the floating docks done, so I would like to make a motion, Mayor, that, but on the next um commission meeting, that we can have the numbers, and we also can have the company that you're looking at can do the floating docks, brought to the Commission, so we can decide on um, decide on repairing the floating docks, so we can go ahead and close that, close that out as far as uh with the state. That's my motion, Mayor.
I, I'd like to add something to that, when you say emergency, emergency is something that happens, if you know you've had to do this for years, it's not an emergency, there was been plenty, plenty, plenty time to put out an RFP and get this done. We've been warned and warned and warned by FD, uh, by, by FDEP, we've been given time, we've been getting extensions now as an emergency, so that at your discretion, you go find somebody just like Chandler Williamson did, I don't agree with it, there's a process and it should be followed. That's, that's my...
For the order, Mayor, it's not the idea of this being an emergency, it's not emergency, it's emerg, the emergency is as far as the um re, uh, getting the process done, it's not saying that we rushing to get it done, you on a timeline with FDEP, we all know uh whether it was supposed to be done last week, last year, four years ago, twenty years ago, and the floating docks ain't been, has not been like that six years ago, or seven years ago, it's been like fifteen, twenty years ago, since two thousand and seven, so, but it needs to be done, we're here now, that needs to be done, so we can't look from two thousand and seven and go get who's on the Commission from two thousand and seven, why y'all haven't had the floating docks done? The floating docks need to be done, it, it's in our lap, we inherited, it needs to get done, so that if we have the capability of getting it done, let's get it done, and close out the um, um, with the state, and that's one completed thing that we have on our docket. Mayor, that's my motion, they either vote up or vote down, Mayor, that's a motion on the floor.
You're not going to do it that way that Chandler Williamson did, we're not gonna go that emergency route.
Why can't we put on that RFP, what's the, what's...
Exactly.
Why isn't our...
Mayor, there's a motion on the floor, Mayor.
So, the purpose is to expedite the process, right? Basically, that's what you're doing? I second.
It has been moved to, by the Vice Mayor Mervin, and seconded by Commissioner Bowden, to add to future agenda items, a expedited process for the floating dock improvements or repairs, and this is just going on the agenda, if, if approved by the majority, to be discussed and uh voted on if necessary.
I have a question, expedite, what, what, what's expedite means? Leave it to the, to the City Manager's discretion for him to go out and seek a contractor to do the work? Is that the expedition, the expedition that, that we're talking about?
Mr. Mayor.
Cause we're not gonna go that route again.
I may be able to help.
City attorney.
So a part of, I guess, what's happening and what vice mayor is trying to address is there is an agreement that we have right now. It is a time sensitive agreement where the, the state is very, has been very clear that well, let me finish, please. The state has been very clear that, and you all signed it, it was, you know, a very pressing issue, that if this doesn't get done, all kinds of things could happen, including the lease no longer being available for you to enter into with the state. So that's a really big deal, obviously. So, and they are very clear that this has to be done. And I believe the deadline is the beginning, is January of 2024, right? January 2024. They want no excuses, they want no anything. They just, they want it done. And, and the city has had a very difficult time and Mr. Lucas is in a better position to tell you about it than I am or his staff, but they've had a very difficult time getting somebody out to actually even commit to looking at the docks and to doing the work. So one of the issues that could be addressed by an emergency vehicle and you all will have to approve, so it's not just the city manager bringing something, it would also be you all looking at questioning whether the person has references, maybe the person coming and making a presentation and so forth. The risk that you face in putting it out for bid is that you may not have, because there's so much work, this marine industry, they are super busy right now, which is why I think Mr. Lucas has had such a difficult time getting somebody out in such a long time, anybody out. It's been very difficult. So I think what the risk that you have, going back to what I was saying, is that those people, those two people that, or those two companies that he had come out, they may not bid. And if you don't get a bid, you're gonna be even more behind than you are right now on being able to get a vendor to do the job. So it's really up to Mr. Lucas to just sort of make sure, you know, he puts, puts the right references in front of you, the right information in front of you so you feel comfortable voting on whatever vendor he is recommending. So it's not just him doing it. You, you all will have the final say. But, you know, you have a lot of different things, I think, is, are in play right now. And, and again, the manager can better explain than I can.
I have a question. How long has, has that, has that been suggested by FDEP?
Well, you know, you, you all have been sitting here, so you've heard the conversations, you've heard that you've seen.
I wanna.
Well, I, I don't, well, ma'am, ma'am, I'm not, ma'am, ma'am, I don't, okay, obviously.
It was extended based on, on the reason that stop changing this and that.
It's irrelevant, it's irrelevant. So I'm not gonna go back and forth and I don't even, and I don't even know, I don't keep that information in my head. We're just telling you, these are the facts, right? And so, and so if you don't have it done, you're gonna be in a bind come January of next year. And they've gotta start the work, they've gotta, you know, do the due diligence to get the stuff in order, to get the materials, which may be an issue. So if you don't secure somebody now and with delays and, you know, materials and everything else coming from wherever it comes from, you may miss that January deadline, which is, they have made very clear will not be moved. So that's the issue.
Which is why this constitutes an emergency.
That's why it's an emergency, yes.
I wanna know from you, when was the original, the original date that they gave us that they told us?
Mayor, point, this is just, there's a motion on the floor, there's a second on the floor. It's just to put it on the agenda to discuss at the next.
It's a motion and a second, and then it's questions. This is the time for questions and I have questions and I wanna, I wanna get it clear so everybody that's at home could hear that we're going the same path again. Here we go. Chandler Williamson 101 again, because we have you making the suggestions, we got the city, the city attorney.
I made a motion.
Saying how we could do this as an emergency and it's time of an instance because we wait to the last minute to come to this, to come to this. And of course, the majority is gonna say, yes, it's an emergency, let's go, let's do it. Go ahead.
Just to put on the agenda.
Yeah, putting it on the agenda. And if he votes on the agenda, you all are gonna vote it when it comes for a vote.
You have, you have time to ask all the questions.
Yeah, no, I don't have to ask no questions, I know it. I know it, I've been here, I've been there.
I have no idea why I put it on the agenda.
Everybody get up, in additional questions?
I have the same question she has. I wanna ask, how long has it been?
Since 2007, one. So you should've came in the commission.
Don't snap at me, hold on, you don't snap at me.
So you should've came in the commission, 2007 and asked that commission, how come them floating docks was never repaired?
I'm a grown adult, don't raise your voice at me.
I'm just saying since 2007.
I just asked a simple question for the first time, you gonna snap at me?
Since 2007.
2007, so we're in like, in 2023, now it's an emergency, it's an emergency.
No, you don't start with me, you don't start with me, okay? I've been respectful for you from day one. Don't disrespect me.
Jesus Christ.
Don't raise your voice at me, I'm not your child.
One since 2007.
I'm not your child, let's clear that up.
Go ahead, do it, do it for the people.
Do it for everybody, I'm not like you, I don't have this little circle I'm just attending to. And that's a fact, the whole city knows it. My question for you, city attorney.
Wow.
I wanna know, since you've been here, how long have you known that this is, this has been done already? Since you've been here.
Look, I'm not your manager, I don't deal with those issues. It's come, it came to my, well, let me finish, let me finish my point. It came to my attention because there was a contract to look at.
I've been knowing since March.
It's irrelevant. The issue is you have, you have a deadline that you have to meet.
You didn't wanna answer my question, now you wanna answer my question.
No, I'm telling you, I still don't know.
You don't know, you don't know.
I, I do not know. My point is, what I do know is that you have a contract that you have to.
You're asking for the city manager.
Right.
I'm not my question, excuse me.
Sir, go ahead.
Excuse me, thank you. City manager, how long have you known since you've been here that we have this issue?
Since I found the documents left by Greg Thompson on March 20, I, I guess, I started April 13, 22. And I say within that first week is when I discovered in a, on the desk that there was a violation and that we had went to court and nobody even showed up for court. And they put it on us then to tax us with all kind of fees, so.
What day was the court date? When was that court date?
It was in March.
And by the way, this is before me.
Yeah, so you go over a year, so we had all this time to put an RFP on it, but no one did nothing about it. I just wanna make that clear, that's all.
Any, in additional questions?
But now all of a sudden, two people came in and they were able to give us numbers.
Exactly.
But we don't know if they're gonna bid, they just came all the way up here just to look at the.
Hearing no additional question, are you ready for a vote roll call, madam clerk? And this to add this on the agenda. This is the request.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes, give me.
Perez?
No.
Mayor Bass?
Yes. Motion passed by a majority, 3-2 vote. Are there any additional recommendation or request by the commission to add items for future agenda items?
Yes, I wanna add for future agenda items. I wanna, I wanna consider after the city manager's evaluation, I wanna consider his contract and I wanna consider the city attorney's contract.
Second.
When you say consider, what do you mean by that?
Consider, that's what I say, consider.
Anything specific or just in general?
In general.
Okay.
It's been moved by Commissioner Perez and second by Commissioner Gonzalez for consideration of the city manager and the city attorney contract after whose evaluation are we talking about?
The city manager's evaluation. When are we gonna discuss it here?
Okay, so we're doing, and this is my question, we're doing the city manager evaluation, but I'm just trying to figure out how the city attorney fight into his evaluation.
It doesn't have to do with his evaluation.
She said contract.
It's to add it, to, this is to add it. How are we gonna, how are we gonna do his evaluation?
Evaluation supposedly be.
We already did it.
Right, right.
They're gonna tally it out and when are we gonna discuss it?
Okay.
I thought I met with you guys individually, cause I've already sent you guys the email tonight with the tally.
Tonight, it must've been after, after five o'clock.
Sending you email.
Okay, it was, it was so, I mean, I haven't seen it, so I cannot discuss it now. Were we supposed to discuss it now?
I thought I was supposed to have opportunity to sit down and speak with you guys individually on the evaluations that you've given me.
Okay.
Question?
I would like the entire community to know what each of us, what numbers we gave you and what was our comment?
I have a question. So from a legal standpoint, do we discuss the details of his evaluation publicly or is that okay?
It, it is, it is okay, that's how it's normally done. You could workshop it if you wanted to, rather than doing it as a part of a regular meeting or some other vehicle. But basically, whatever you do, it has to be done in public.
All right. It was second, we're calling for questions. My, my question is, you mentioned the fact about the city attorney, I'm just trying to get the two separated. I see maybe the city manager, because he's been evaluated, but we haven't at this point evaluated the city attorney. I don't know how I should get in the mix of that.
I, I don't either, Mr. Mayor. And I think, and it's, every time I say something that the commissioner Perez doesn't like, it ends up being, let's fire the city attorney. And that's unfortunate because I give sound legal advice and I seek to do that every single time, and every single time I'm dealing with you all or the managers. So the bottom line is, I'm a contracted person, I'm not your, you know, I'm not your employee at any point. If three of you feel that I'm not doing whatever or up to par, three of you can fire me. That's my contract, basically. So it is not, you know, I, I don't, I'm a contracted employee, I don't get, you don't, you won't find contracted employees being evaluated like regular employees. I don't get a pension, I don't get any overtime, I don't get retirement, I don't get any of that, right? I'm here to do a job as a professional, which is what I do. So I, you know, you all do what you're gonna do, but it has nothing to do with the other and I think it's, and I think it's retaliatory.
I have, I have an answer for you. You talk about retaliatory.
It is.
Okay, you sat there and you lied.
I don't, I, I never do that.
Yes, ma'am, you have lied.
No, I never do that.
Yes, ma'am, you have lied.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would ask that you all vote on the item because I, I'm not gonna sit here and be, and be, and be lied on.
Another quality that you have, another quality that you have is that you always find the back door to the legal side, okay?
No, I'm not finding the back door.
Another thing is that you don't take in consideration and you don't, you don't defend the city.
I, I defend the city very well. Mr. Mayor, I would ask that, I would ask that you vote on the item. I think this is very unfair, I don't want this to turn on me and start yelling and being inappropriate towards me for no reason.
Get the gavel, ma'am.
It's just like.
Of retaliation. You sat there, the day that, the day that something came up here, you said.
Now you're gonna talk about something else.
That you have filed a motion on behalf of O'Keechaw Lee Land. First of all, I had nothing to do with O'Keechaw Lee Land. Second of all.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah.
No, I don't even know what you're talking about.
You don't know, cause you don't have a know. You sit there and you try to make me seem like, I don't know what I'm talking about.
You make up things all the time.
But you, ma'am, you are dangerous, you're dangerous. You sat there, no.
So are you.
You sat there and you said about Chandler Williamson.
That he was ready to file, the attorney was ready to fi, to file a lawsuit.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
For his time, right?
I have no idea what you're talking about, Mr. Mayor.
He hadn't even mentioned it. When he had even mentioned it, but you were speaking out on behalf of Chandler Williamson. You approved it, you told him to go ahead and pay.
What are you talking about? You make up things.
Oh, yeah, I make up things and you lie. I make up things and you lie. You lie. You sat up there about the day that we were sworn in and it was on the chart and you refused to read it. But they're, they're blind, they're blind. And you know that as long as you got the majority here, your city is secure. But you know, there is a God and the majority will change, as God is my witness. And you, ma'am, will not be the, the attorney for this city.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to have a discussion about the city manager. I'm not sure why Heather was in here at this point, after the evaluation is done, to discuss the contract of the city manager and the city attorney.
Well, I just, I just discussed it. If I put a motion to fire her.
Are you ready for a vote?
You guys are not gonna approve, so.
Roll call, madam clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
What, what are we voting on?
You're, you're adding the city manager.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
No.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Nope.
Mayor Bass?
No. Motion passed.
You see it, Pahokee, you see it, life in colors.
Were you, you voted? You voted, yes.
You don't wanna discuss the, the.
3-2.
Contract, right, Keith? You don't wanna discuss the contract?
No, you added.
After the evaluation.
You, you added the city attorney, which has no bearing on your.
Okay, I amend my motion. I take out the city attorney and we're gonna do this.
It's been voted on.
Okay, I make another motion. I make another motion. I make another motion that we discuss the, the city, the city manager's contract based on his evaluation.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Perez and second by Commissioner Gonzalez to discuss the city manager contract based on his evaluation after the process is completed. Call for question. I would just say this, I, I, I respect what you're trying to do, Commissioner Perez, but the way you present yourself and the way you do it is really totally unprofessional. You can, you can do the same thing in a decent and orderly manner, that's all I'm saying. And you may get more support doing it that way.
Okay, I mean, I, I, I'll, I'll take what, what, what you're saying. That is my way, I'm, I'm responsible for the way I act, that should have no bearing on the way that you vote or anyone else for that matter. Because the issue is the issue. The issue is the city manager, the issue is evaluation and the issue is the contract.
Are you ready, are you ready for a vote? And this for a future agenda item. Roll call, madam clerk.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
No.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Nope.
Mayor Bass?
Yes. Motion passed, it will be added to a future agenda. Are there any additional requests for agenda items? Hearing that, we'll move to the city commission comments and I'll start with Vice Mayor and work myself to my left.
No comment, mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Perez.
Okay, I have different, different concerns. One of the issues that I wanna address, the lady was talking about the tires. There is someone in the community that's going around the, the city and he's illegal dumping tires all around the town. He goes, there's, there's, they know the vehicle, they know the person, and it's been reported. So that's illegal dumping. And I suggest that we put, we put the picture of the vehicle and we let everyone know to keep an eye out as well. As well, as someone that's illegally dumping construction debris, there's an individual that's bought several homes in the city of Pahoki, a lot of them in the East Lake area. We have pictures of him, the truck, the debris. He's illegal dumping all around town just because he doesn't want to pay a fee of a container. The individual is not even from the area. He's not from the city. They come from outside. They buy the properties. They demolish them, and then they go around the city. This has been happening for a while now. It's been complained, and nothing's been done. So that needs to be taken care of. Also, I have an issue as well as everybody else with the splash pad. We've been talking about this splash pad since I became a commissioner. It's already going to go on three years. It's talk and talk and talk, and no action. It needs this. It needs that. It might need that. We need somebody to come, but nothing has been done about it. It's time to get results, to take action, and stop the talk. For three years, it's the same issues we come up here, where we're then deciding for the contract. We're seeking this. We're seeking that. We're doing this. We're doing that, okay? And I want that community to understand that in order to get something done up here, it has to be the majority. So if you don't have three commissioners that think alike, that love, that care, and represent you, then you have the power to do something about it. You don't have to wait for voting time. You could do something about it. I'm tired. I'm tired. I've been here, sitting here three years, okay? Three years, giving my time, my effort, and everything that I have, only not to be able to get nothing accomplished because I'm not the popular. Everybody knows that everybody here will benefit greatly if I wasn't sitting in this chair. But what they don't know is that if I'm not sitting in this chair, I'll be more dangerous than sitting on this chair, because I'm going to continue. I'm going to continue to be, I want transparency. I want clarity. I don't want to make the same mistakes again, and I want the corruption to stop, to stop, to stop. This city have seen so much money, and you walk around it, and it looks like we're living in a third world country, okay? Because we go and look at the things that should be done, and we should be greater than any city in the Palm Beach County. But yet, we don't have nothing here. And I don't, I don't really fight for the adults, because they have the power to do something about it. I'm advocating for the next generation, for the ones that are coming up, the ones that already came up and went. Because when they left, there were more things here than what it is now. But I'm telling you guys, it doesn't matter to me whether you reelect me or not. But what I'm telling you, that if you continue voting the way that you're voting, Pahoki is never, never going to have anything, because you see it. You saw it tonight. You saw it tonight. We're going back to the old ways. That's all I have to say.
Commissioner Bowden?
Thank you all for coming out. God bless you all.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Well, species at the moment, nothing.
Thank you. I entertain a motion for adjournment of the meeting since all business that have been brought forth, they have been taken care of. Can I get a second? I have Gonzalez as the motion.
Second.
It moved by Commissioner Gonzalez and prompted second by Commissioner Vice Mayor to adjourn the meeting. Call for question on, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bass?
Yes.
Motion passed. This meeting adjourned.